I call the March 26, 2024 City Commission Work Session to order. City staff, could you please call the roll?
Mayor Butler.
President.
Commissioner Adam Jack.
Present.
Commissioner McCullough.
Yes.
Commissioner Opel.
Here.
Commissioner Mata.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, we have a quorum, so please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, is this, since this is a work session, we need to determine if we wish to have public comment. So if the commission would like to have public comment, we'll need a motion for that effect.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, can we please call the roll?
Commissioner Adam Jack.
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough.
Yes.
Commissioner Opel.
Yes.
Commissioner Mata.
Yes.
Mayor Butler.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so we will have public comment tonight. Now, the work session items tonight, first one is, I guess Wyatt, you're going to present the Seaco Park Improvement Update.
Yes, good evening, commissioners. Also have Aaron Stewart, Park and Recreation Director here, who can answer some questions, and then I'll introduce some of our consulting team that's here as well. They're going to lead the majority of the presentation tonight. I wanted to give just a bit of background on the project. I know we've spoken about this project before at the retreat and at past meetings with some of you. I wanted to provide some background, and then our design-build team will walk you through kind of where we're at to date with concepts and ideas for the renovation of the park, and then we'll have some discussion at the end. So our project dates back to 2015, when we looked at a number of athletic facilities in the Parks and Rec system, came up with a number of priorities, looked at some feasibility studies, and ultimately passed a tax in 2017 that supported the funding of the recreation centers, trails, and Seaco Park. Those were the projects identified in that recreation and trails sales tax. And in 2023, we hired the design-build team of BHS Construction and Baker McMillan Architects and their team to guide us through the next steps in that design process. So we're in the middle of a Phase One preliminary design contract, and they'll come up with concepts and a guaranteed maximum price to present to you at a future meeting. And then if that's authorized, then we'll proceed to final design and construction. So our project consists of a multipurpose softball-baseball fields with synthetic turf playing surfaces, 12 tennis court layout, and all the other improvements that go along with those types of facilities. That's an excerpt from that question, and we'll show you how those facilities are playing out as we move through the concepts, as well as the budget considerations that we're trying to work through as part of this preliminary design process. A number of objectives that we have for the project that were identified back in 2017 and are carrying forward today, really this list is summarized by saying we want to have more activity at Seaco Park. We want to update those facilities and create more opportunities for youth and adult sports, both recreation and competitive tournaments, a home for Manhattan High, baseball, softball, and tennis, as well as update a number of other aspects of the park related to drainage, ADA accessibility, connectivity, just give the park an update. It's been a long time since Seaco Park has been invested in. It was originally built in the 1960s, and so we're excited to be able to bring updates and modernize those facilities. I've had a number of public engagement opportunities thus far with some more planned. This commission appointed a 15-member advisory committee to help guide that process. There are some of those members in the audience tonight who may want to share their thoughts on the process to date. We've had five focus group interviews, a number of intergovernmental or city-county USD meetings that we've hosted. Also, I've presented updates to the Riley County Commission, as well as the USD 383 Facilities and Growth Committee, as well as the Full Board of Education, to keep them apprised of the process. And we do have a public meeting planned and other updates to you all and those other government entities out here before the summer, when we'll be moving on to Phase Two. Funding considerations, we had, as we talked with you at the commission retreat a few months ago, we had an original budget back in 2017 of eight and a half million. We projected inflation cost and had a $10 million project when we went out for our RFP to hire our design consultants. We pretty quickly learned that that inflation factor that we calculated wasn't enough to keep up with actual inflation that the construction industry saw since COVID and in that COVID recovery period. And so we talked to you about a $15 million planning budget for the project based on those initial cost estimates, as well as the projected performance of the Rec and Trails Fund, which is showing enough revenue to be able to cover that project by the time we go to construction. So we've built towards a project of 15 million. We've identified a base bid project of four ballfields, eight tennis courts, some basic parking utilities, some of those other infrastructure amenities at 13.25 million. And our consultants will walk you through what all, in more detail, what's included in that. They've also identified $6 to $7 million of additional facilities and amenities that could be incorporated into the project. So obviously, we can't do all of them. And so we've taken that information to the advisory committee, and they've reviewed those options, prioritized their top five. We'll discuss what those are. We're trying to fit those top amenities into that $15 million budget. So when we're talking tonight, just to set the stage for where we're talking about, the Seaco Ballfields at the northeast corner of Seaco Park at Kimball and Wreath Avenue, there's four, there's five ballfields there today, the central concessions building, a little bit of gravel parking on city property, some gravel parking on Riley County property. The white lines in this image are the property lines, and so you can see that that the majority of the ballfields sit on city property, a little bit of bleed over onto USD 383. Here to the south, this is the north end of Bishop Stadium, here at the south end of the picture. And then this gravel parking lot is shared by the city and the county. And then when we talk about the existing tennis complex, we're talking about this area east of Bishop Stadium. So this is Wreath Avenue on the right. This is Robinson Drive on the south, heading in towards the pool here. And then the stadium, obviously, we've got three existing tennis courts, which are in dire need of replacement. We also have a skate park in this vicinity, and then there's a large detention area that runs through the park, detains water here and prevents flooding and erosion downstream. It's been a really critical piece of infrastructure, and so we're balancing all of those different space needs and property ownership and partnership with the district in order to make those improvements there. So just wanted to kind of set that stage, provide that background. Unless there's questions about any of that, I'll introduce our consultant to kind of walk you through the design ideas and concepts that we've prepared to date, and then we can have a full discussion after his time.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so Garrick Baker is with Baker McMillan Architects, and he'll walk you through his presentation.
Good evening, mayor, commissioners. Garrick Baker with Baker McMillan Architects, one of the many team members working on this project. And with us this evening, we have Bruce McMillan and then Garrett Garman with Erasmus School of Engineering. We also have Kelly Carl with BHS Construction, and then we also have, excuse me. Why am I blanking right now? Will Mann, I don't know why I did that. Will Mann with Schwab Eaton. Judd Gladden has also been really helpful through that team as well. So first off, thank you all for allowing us to come up and speak this evening about some of the improvements we're looking at. So some of the top priorities that we're going to be talking about this evening is, of course, we're going to go through that introduction of how we got to where we are today. And then we'll also look at things like capacity. How many spectators can we actually have at this complex with the project that we're projecting? The economy, that's where all the dollar figures come in, and seeing how we can start to make sure that we have everything accommodated there. And then we'll look at the priorities. So Wyatt alluded to some of those priorities that our advisory committee has set forth for us. So we're really trying to get those to fit within the project budget. And then safety, that's one of the top priorities that we have out there, making sure that this is a place that folks can go and play and recreate in a safe manner. And then we'll go over the timeline, and then I'll answer and ask the other teammates to come up to answer any questions as well. So what we see up here, you'll see in that kind of larger circle, that is what we call our STC. That is our Staff Technical Committee. And I just want to extend a big thank you to the team here at City Hall. They make up that STC or the Staff Technical Committee. They're always a joy to work with, so very proud of them there. And it has all of the different areas there, bringing their areas of expertise. So anything that we need to make sure that we have note of, they're always there, and we're in constant contact and coordination. And then we have our design team over on the right-hand side. So that's all of the different consultants in there. Some that we do not have present with us this evening are Dudley Williams and Associates out of Wichita, and then Jeff Emanuel with NIMHA. And those are a lot of our sporting experts in there as well. And then we have our advisory committee there. That was that 15 member that was appointed. They have been excellent to work with and really making sure that the community needs are being met, so they're not prioritizing one thing or the other. They're really making sure that they're representing the community while there. Things that you see over in the right, in the red, those are some of those stakeholder meetings that we've been meeting with, everything from the school district to the county and city staff. And then we've also presented to the intergovernmental meetings, as some of you know. And then the gray, that's just all of the stuff we have to follow to make sure everything stays safe, operational, and up to code. Moving on to the capacity, so what you see here is, moving clockwise, I'm going to start from that northwest field up there. You're going to hear things like primary and secondary fields. The primary, those will have a little bit upgraded finishes there, so that's a little more of your playoffs, that type of field scenario. So the northwest field is that secondary field. We are going to have possibly 300 spectators there. And the way we calculated the spectators, Parks and Rec will have a little bit lower kind of needs for those spectators, whereas something like a state tournament would have a much higher capacity. So that's what we're trying to accommodate there, and that's where that capacity and spectator number came from. So in the northwest, 300 spectators, we have a 220-foot outfield. This type of field is really ideal for 12-and-under baseball, but then also for fast-pitch softball. Moving to the northeast field, so that's one of our primary fields. So kind of that tournament championship, that's where we're going to be looking at there. And we have a capacity of 500 spectators for this, so a pretty good crowd there. And we would have a 385-foot outfield. And then with that kind of deep outfield there, we have the ability to actually have like flag football or soccer or something like that in the outfield. So there's multi-use purposes there between the northeast and the southeast. Southeast would be another secondary field there, but a little bit reduced spectators. We would have 300 or so there. And then 350-foot outfield, and again, same thing, we've got that multi-use there for all of the different sports. In the southeast, we have 300 spectators, and this would be our primary field at the southwest corner, 220-foot outfield versus what is up at the northwest, which is 220. Now, two key things here, we do have a warm-up area in there. And this is one of those amenities that we were able to fit within kind of the scope of our projects. What that allows for is during that tournament play, other teams can be out there warming up at the exact same time in a safe place. It'll all be netted and everything, so just making sure that all of the teams can safely fit within there. And then in the lower right, we also have the eight tennis courts. These will be multi-line, so we can have junior and adult tennis on there as well. And thankfully, we were able to have all eight courts lit. So if there's any kind of evening tournaments, we will be able to accommodate that. When looking at the economy and the project budget on this, we have two main components on here. And that's going to be kind of our base allowance and then our committee priority. That 13,275,000, that is our base allowance there. I will just note that this is still pretty fluid. That number can go up, it can go down, it can stay the same. There's going to be some changes that come with that, and I'll get into that in a minute. But then that allowed for, if we did go up to that 15 million, we would have 1.7 million that our committee could then have as a priority to make this a real destination complex. So when asking our advisory committee, we came up with our top five priorities there. So things like batting tunnels, bullpens, warm-up area, overhead protective netting, shaded seating area, a maintenance shed, and then playground allowance. So as we were kind of looking at that committee priority, we noticed things like locker rooms weren't much of a priority for the high school. So we were able to take that out of our design, and through that, that kind of faded number four there, our maintenance shed then took the place of those locker rooms. So again, those dollar figures start to kind of move around a little bit, just with those different priorities, and plugging those in there. So right now, looking at all five priorities, we would have 2.6 million, which is over budget by about 900,000. But again, that number's very fluid right now. We will be able to plug things into the budget, out of the budget, and design to try and bring that as close to and under that 15 million as best we can. Moving into what we call our Concept A5. I'm just going to start from the top of the screen and work downward. Up in the northwest, we would have some additional new, or not additional, but new paved parking there that works for all of our ADA and making the complex accessible there. And working with the county, they would like their property to remain all gravel and grass out there just for ease of trailers and everything else. So that hard stop that you see there, that would be the limits of our paved parking, but then the rest would just be as it is right now. The northwest field, so we have our secondary softball or secondary field there. Clockwise, again, the primary is that larger field, and the secondary baseball is kind of that lower right, moving into the southwest primary softball field. That lighter green in the middle is that warm-up area, so that one there would have throwing areas and then kind of enclosed batting cages there. So anytime there is a tournament play going on, the general public could also go in and kind of warm up and practice in those areas without impacting all of the other fields there as well. We have accounted for the playground, so if we can get that within the budget, that's in the blue up towards the top. Also, towards the top, we are looking at possibly relocating utilities underground, or not utilities, all of the electrical lines underground. The reason behind that is we're kind of finding out that some of our fencing and lighting is in conflict with some of those utilities that go through there. So we're trying to evaluate if we need to do that, and it's looking more and more like we possibly maybe need to do that underground. Of course, we're also tearing it all up, and all of that grading changes now would be an optimal time to do so. As you see, the lighter green on the fields themselves, that will be artificial turf. Same with that brighter brown would be the artificial turf. And then in the outfield, those will be irrigated natural turf out there. And then we do have some pathways that go around, and I'll show that during our safety there. This brown kind of spot here in the middle, that's what we keep calling as our central building or concession building. That's where we originally had our locker rooms, but that goes away, so we do have maintenance in there as well. And we'll dive into that a little bit here in a minute. So moving further south, closer to Robinson Drive, we would look at our tennis courts down here, where we would have eight tennis courts. There is potential for constructing area for USD throwing events. Right now, they just kind of hop around, whereas this could possibly get them a dedicated space that they can continually use. And I will note that all of the improvements to the park will be within city property and USD 383 property. So we will not be encroaching onto the county property there. We will have some shade structures out in the middle of there, so during those hot summer days, folks can get a little relief there. And then we're also looking at using the existing restrooms and concessions there, just south of Bishop. So in looking at safety, of course, there's always the overhead protective netting and seeing how we can accommodate that the best, so spectators can sit there and actually enjoy the game and not have to worry about any foul balls coming around. We also have fire and emergency access gated complex. So that way then, during tournaments, you could have all of that gated control, so you could actually charge admissions or anything like that. Unobstructive egress, so making sure that everything's accessible for everyone, and then space allocated to a storm shelter. So with the safety there, we do have our fire and EMS. So we've been working with risk reduction and the fire department to make sure that we have that clear passageway there. Also, for any kind of EMS services can clearly go through there. The kind of dotted lines around the exterior, so that would be the access for, if we're working on any kind of lights or getting mowers to the fields, we just have available access right there. And then anything that you see with a red halo, that is our overhead protective netting. So you'll be fully protected from anything flying from any other direction. And just with the way that the sports are played, we do not have anything for safety-wise for the tennis. We do have perimeter fence around it and between each court there. So that's just why we don't have a slide showing that one. In looking at that central building, again, working with our partners and the advisory committee, we learned that we didn't actually need to have locker rooms in there. We were trying to make sure that we had that. So now, this open space over on kind of the northwest area there, that would actually be storage, or it could be programmed for some type of a function. So maybe somebody rents it out for a birthday party or something like that, and we have it accessible to all of the restrooms and the concession stands. So no matter the time of year, that building could be in use, and it's accessible from the interior as well as the exterior. And then, as we were trying to figure out what were we going to do for a roof on this, we thought, why not turn that into another amenity there? So this would be a rooftop viewing patio, so we can just increase that many more spectators around the perimeter there, and you'll have a pretty good view of any type of games going on there. So just to see things a little bit visually here, this would be the approach along the west, coming from the parking lot area there. So we do have this large accessway for any kind of emergencies, just in case. We also have going out and around perimeter trail, so that way then we can, of course, get mowers and trucks. But also, it allows folks to go around and then join up with the football field and make use that way. This would be the southwest field. So as you can see, it is, the sightlines are pretty good on this. The way we're going to be constructing the poles and the netting and everything, making sure it's the best experience that all of the spectators can have. This would be an example of the dugouts here, so this would be on that primary field on the northeast corner. And then, if you get drafted and you're the pitcher up there, this would be you on the mound out on that primary field as well. And we do have currently a little bit of a recess between where the field and the spectators are, just so we can get a little bit better viewing lines for spectators. And then a view from the Bolton Pavilion, so you can see that main building towards the back. Each field will have their own throwing areas to warm up the pitchers and things in between innings. And then this is that warm-up area that we were talking about. So everything would be fully enclosed here, so folks can go out there, play catch and throw around without any of the spectators having to be too worried about things. And then our batting cages are back towards the back there as well. You'll see kind of this red box back here. We've also thrown around the ideas of having food trucks go out in there, just as another option in amenity. And then this would be the view from that elevated viewing deck, so it's a pretty great view up there. This would be looking towards the north there. So that's that primary field there in the back, and then warm-up, and then that secondary field. This would be our four-court layout for our tennis. You'll see a few different options for shade sails and shade structures out in the middle. And then we do have each one of the courts divided there. That way then it just provides, again, more safety there. And with that, we have, it's always easier to kind of see this in motion. So this would be as you're coming in from Kimball Avenue and going to that west entry point. So again, kind of as we were talking about earlier, this entry, we haven't fully developed this yet. We're still in progress. This would be the gated entry point, so that you could actually collect revenue and things there. And then as we move forward, you can see there's plenty of space there for any type of food trucks or emergency vehicles, of course. As you can see here, we do have a shade structure up above that viewing platform, so it's a little bit more comfortable during those hot summer days. You'll see kind of these little flickers up here. That is all of that overhead netting that's acting as that protective. As we go around the corner here, I'll pause this. So that's the Bolton Pavilion back there, just for reference. We do have family restrooms, we do have four of those, as well as umpire-changing rooms and coaches' coordinating rooms there. So this would be kind of going around that southeast corner there. And then from there, we're kind of in the shade here, but we'll go up onto that viewing platform. So up here, you can start to see some of that warm-up area in the background, but you have a complete 360 view of all of the fields. So if you're sitting there coaching one of the teams, you can glance over at the other field and know when your team's up and make sure you're on the field in time. This will be going over to the warm-up area again. So all enclosed, making sure all of that is safe. And then from there, we'll start to look at some of the tennis amenities. So all of that's the batting cages there, and then the warm-up area over there. So here would be all of the tennis courts, all eight of them, with the shade structures out towards the middle. We do have bleachers out there, and then all of the fencing that goes around there, just to be a little more protective. So as you can see, sorry, this green area back here, that would be where the throwing areas are. If you notice, kind of up towards the top there, that's how far we're kind of encroaching and growing those fields. So there's going to be a lot of cut and fill and regrading that has to go on there. So that's a lot of the work that has to go on. And if USD would like to partner on that, we could look at getting those throwing areas in there for javelin, discus, and making sure they have a permanent home then.
While you're on the tennis courts, could I ask a question? Where do the spectators go?
We do have some bleachers in between here, and all of these are mobile bleachers, so they're not fixed or anything like that. I can show you the video.
Yeah, I see them, but not very many. As a tournament, you'd have, I would think you'd have a lot of other teams waiting to play and...
Which we will also have, so here's, we're getting a little bit better in there. Those bleachers can all be moved. We can also, that grading around the perimeter of it, we'll need to make that somewhat flat so that we can work on all of the lights and everything. So there will be plenty of room to put bleachers around the outside if need be. So with that, we'll look at our timeline real quick here. So March 2024, coming to you guys and presenting to you, just showing you where we're at and the progress we have made so far. Our next meeting will be with our advisory committee, so they'll be able to give us feedback along with you guys this evening. And then hopefully, around June, we will be coming back to potentially look at pursuing that Phase Two and finalizing the design. So with that, I will go ahead and open it up to any questions, and we have the design team here as well.
I have a few.
Okay.
And Wyatt, maybe we need you back as well. So can you give us an update on where things stand with the school district and Riley County in terms of any cost sharing at these projects?
Yes, we've had great conversations with with both groups. Cost sharing hasn't been a primary topic of that discussion. Our conversations with the county commission have, they've granted, you know, they were okay with the idea of granting the city temporary easements to allow construction to occur across those property lines. They were, they were okay with construction of potential parking enhancements on their property along Robinson Drive to serve the tennis area. They weren't so much in favor of allowing tennis courts on their property. And so that that parking conversation is, wasn't shown in the concepts tonight. It's one of those options that we're kicking around and trying to look at options for either maybe, maybe there's sidewalks that go to other existing parking lots that would would work in the meantime while additional funding could be found for for those future parking enhancements. Conversations with the Board of Education, also very positive, productive. You know, I think they're, they're interested in partnering on one for their side to use the fields, but also opening up access to the Bishop Stadium restrooms and concessions. They indicated a potential for funding to to construct the throwing areas for their track and field events that that would occur and potentially other amenities. We're, we're talking with them about, you know, that list of six to seven million dollars of of options that could be something that benefits the the high school teams and activities that they might be willing to to contribute to. So, and Eric Reed is here tonight from the district and could could speak directly from his perspective as well, if you'd like.
Yes, I would.
Thank you, Commissioner. To speak to that, first, I'd like to compliment the team and all the design people along the way and the people that gave input. I think they did a great job on that. As far as funding, you know, with this project initially started out in 2017, we were not asked for funding upfront or to be a partner on the funding. That was something that came later. As far as were the districts able to free up funds? Most of the escalation of costs is due to inflation, which we're seeing as well with our capital outlays. So what I can tell you is we're going to do the best we can as far as that. I think any improvement to any throwing area, we would fully expect the district to be responsible for and move forward with. We're going to look at our end of the year as well as our other capital projects. Our budgeting is different than city municipal budgeting. So for us to be able to put in a large dollar amount in a short amount of time to be able to say we can fund this part is very difficult for us to do. But we are going to look at some of those slotted. What we've asked is to try to section them off as much as we possibly can. And if there's areas we can pay for and we can own as part of the district, that we're willing to do that as well. So definitely want to be part of the conversation moving forward, understanding that we have the skin in the game as it comes out. But originally, back when this agreement was kind of pushed forward as well, is our contribution was supposed to be the property. But but we also know things, things change and we're in the same boat as everybody else. And we want to make this a long term project for the entire community just as well. Because we, we've got a lot of, a lot to gain by this. We've got a lot to lose if it's not good. So we appreciate that.
Sure.
Is that?
Yeah, I mean, it's just, I would imagine that the school district would benefit greatly from a number of these tournaments that we're hoping to draw. And so, you know, I would like to see some skin in the game.
Absolutely. And and we understand that as well and we're willing to do, do what we can, absolutely.
Let me piggyback on that. I understand that the school is going to use these practice things for the softball team and the baseball team in spring, which will of course tie them up pretty substantially, I would think, with all the practices and things like that. Not just the games, which will bring in, you know. So it would seem to me that partnership of monetary partnership would be, you know, since we're extending to you the opportunity to have your teams work, play there, so.
Commissioner, we, we have a longstanding relationship with the, with the school district for shared facilities. And and over the years, you know, our programs have utilized school gyms. Their programs have utilized the tennis courts in City Park as well as Norval Baseball Field and Twin Oaks Fields at Annenberg for for their programs. And so when, you know, Eric is right, in fifteen through seventeen, when the question and the project was being formulated, it was, it was always a city driven project with the idea that, that the district would utilize those facilities as they do our other facilities. I think there's, there are certainly advantages to the district for that. And and should they pay for that? I guess that's an argument that that you're making and that and that we'll, we'll consider. If Eric is right, though, it wasn't ever part of the, of the discussion. It was a city driven project because the facilities are community driven facilities. Yes, the district can and will use them, but so will all of our, our programs. And Aaron can speak to detail about what those might look like. But generally speaking, the district's baseball program starts in March and ends by May. And our summer ball programs start after school starts or after school is done in the summer. Their, their practices and programs start at 3:30. And most of our practices and programs start after five, when people are off work. So I think there can be a lot of shared use opportunities between all the facilities and still have plenty of opportunity for public in that after five period, the weekends, the summer, even into the fall with outfield and use for flag football and soccer on those, on those larger fields. So I, I don't really view the, the district's use of our facilities preventing use. In fact, it may open up use because now we'll have Norval opened back up. We'll have Twin Oaks opened back up. So there'll be additional facilities that the district is currently using that will be potentially more available to the public to use.
I was going to comment on that. I mean, my, my expectation on this was never for the school district to kick in any money. That's not how we designed it, except for these added things that, that, you know, what I call mission creep. We, we never discussed having the javelin area and all that. And if, if that gets put in here, I would expect the school district to fully fund that.
As, as would I, Mayor.
Yeah, but, 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 you know, I, I agree with the shared use thing, I guess, from perspective of taxpayer. What difference does it make whether the school board pays for it or the city? Because we're going to pay for it, you know, the middle levy, one way or the other. So, so that, that's not relevant. So I think, I like your explanation, Wyatt, that you gave on that because it, I think it makes sense, puts it in perspective. Now, the only question I had, though, is, you know, on the ballot, we, we did mention 12 tennis courts. So we've gone to eight. Is that going to cause us any legal problems? Because the voters voted, I mean, you put the question up there, it said 12. So is that an issue?
We provided you all an update in January. The legal staff is looking at this from a perspective of budget and and capacity. You're not obligated to build everything in that question. There are obviously things that have changed in circumstances. COVID, the post-COVID inflation, those are the types of things that have impacted this project and and the use of the money. You've seen the budget grow from eight and a half million to 15 million. So they've come with the opinion that, no, you don't have to do these things. It's not like you have to adjust or find additional money to fulfill the question. The question was there to generally describe, and it specifically called out 12 courts, but it doesn't require you to do that. And as we talked in January, there's flexibility for, and it's ultimately up to the commission as to what we build here. But the question did reference 12. The reality is the budget's not going to allow it. There's also constraints in terms of property ownership and as Wyatt described, there's other entities involved here. We don't own the land where the, the tennis is going. And there's adjacencies that aren't even within the school district ownership. So there are other factors at play, budget being the primary one. Ultimately authorized project in which we'll bring back a budget. If, if the commission decided, no, 12 is absolutely where we need to go. We need to adjust something else, we would need that direction this evening. Because I believe they're showing you a 13 point, some odd million dollar base with the capacity to go another 1.7 million. If that's the direction of the commission, we'll move in that direction. But this is the recommended alternative before you this evening, based on the budget.
I don't have a, I don't have a problem personally with the eight. You know, it's just, I just wanted that answered in case people ask that. So legally, it's not a problem. I think originally we put 12 in there because somebody had said that we needed that many to host a tournament. And and it'd be interesting to clarify that because I still see emails and people saying, well, eight's not going to be sufficient. But, so I'm hearing two different stories. The last one I heard was eight is sufficient to host the tournaments. Is that correct?
Yes. So we, we addressed this question at several meetings with the advisory committee as, as well as with the, with the district. The, the conversation in 17, 15 through 17, the conversations with KESHA were, were that we needed 12 courts to host a state tournament. Our more recent conversations with KESHA have indicated that to host a state tournament, we would need 10. There's two state tennis tournaments a year. They rotate around, so we would need 10 to qualify for that. With eight courts, we would still qualify for a regional, which would be, there's actually greater opportunity and potential to get those tournaments than there is the state tournament. We actually don't host any state tournaments to my, is that correct? At USD facilities or city facilities?
No. Universe, university facilities host state baseball for 3A, I believe.
We ho, we host at, we host.
State softball.
We host states, state softball at Annenberg. But the university hosts basketball and baseball and and other, other activities. So, so we can still host a majority of those, of those tournaments. We could also host a USTA league championships, which we cannot host now. And so, so those needs, I think, from KESHA did change a little bit and and we're trying to adapt to that budget. That six to seven million dollar additional amenities does include potential additional four courts. It's about, I think, 800 to 900,000 dollars to add those courts. And so if we wanted to prioritize those above some of the other amenities that we've talked about, that's certainly a, a feedback we could, could accept. As the advisory committee reviewed the, the different options, the additional four courts wasn't among their top five just based on the ability to host the tournaments that we could with eight.
I'm, I'm going to add into that, I'm sorry, add into that as well. Just the fact that if we went to 10 or 12 courts doesn't automatically mean we're going to host and we're certainly not going to host every year. Maybe we're going to host three times throughout the life of those tennis courts. And is it worth that? And for the district to be able to move to that, to one, take the space for the throwing areas? Our track program is one of the largest athletic programs we have. It's probably one of the largest athletic teams in the state. Over 10% of our students from Manhattan High are on the track team. Over 200 kids, 250, 260 kids running track. So more space for those throwers is pretty paramount for us. Right now, we use the county area to the west of Bishop Stadium. And we coordinate kind of the throwing, the, we rotate the three throwing events. So for us, it can be a safety issue, it can be a capacity issue as well as the tennis being the ideal number, 10 to 12 courts, is only going to help us host so many times throughout the course of 20 years where the extended track can help us every day. Every, every day in the spring we run track. So for us, it was number one, space. Number two, cost of the overall project and not to try to escalate that. And we got a good chance to host regional, people like coming to Manhattan.
Yeah, that's an excellent explanation because a lot, a lot of people dancing around this issue. But, but I, I understand why we've come to the conclusion that eight. And I think it, it meets the intent of the ballot question because it wasn't really 12 courts. It was about being able to host some kind of tournaments. And I agree, getting a state one may, may be a bridge too far. But this way, we're positioned to, to do the best we possibly can. So I'm, I'm, I'm content with that.
I have some more questions still, if I can continue. So actually, kind of related to this, I've been hearing from people that they would like to see pickleball courts. Are those included in the list of additional amenities?
We're, we're, we would recommend separate pickleball facilities for a couple of reasons. One, if pickleball and tennis are different sports, we don't have budget for, we, we didn't look at budget for additional pickleball courts. And I think we run into the same, for the same reasons we are talking about budget for additional tennis courts. There's, there's budget and land restraints at CECO. I believe Aaron, as, as part of the movement MHK plan, is looking at additional outdoor pickleball courts elsewhere in the system. I think that the community does need those facilities. CECO may not be the right spot for them, and so we would need a different strategy for that. We did look initially at, at combining them and some communities do. You can have pickleball and tennis on the same courts. There's, there's different rules, there's different dimensions, there's different net heights. There's, there's competition among the user groups for that space. And so that's, we would recommend having dedicated pickleball facilities elsewhere and then dedicating these facilities at CECO to tennis. With the caveat that we would have junior tennis lines, so you could play multiple ages of tennis. But that, that keeps us in compliance for USTA tournaments as well. A USTA won't bring their tournaments if you have pickleball lines, according to conversations, so.
Neither will KESHA, I believe.
Okay. So it was a little bit difficult for me to tell from the illustrations. Where is the throwing area relative to the tennis courts?
Immediately north.
Is that part of that drainage area that you mentioned, Wyatt?
It's to the east of the drainage area. So right now, you can see in the background, this little red bit sticking out above the green is the, this is the existing tennis court area. And then there's existing parking and there's the skate park here. That detention area is kind of outlined in this little squiggle line here. So this is where that detention is. So, you know, I don't think this is exactly where the throwing sectors would go. I think they'll probably shift north and east a little bit. We haven't finalized any of that design, pending conversations with you all and and with the district about their participation and their prioritization of that facility. So I think this general area is where throwing would go. And preliminarily, there's enough space to do that. We'd have to look at exactly whether or not it impacts the drainage. It would impact the parking and the skate park.
Okay, moving on. I saw, if I counted correctly in the renderings, there are five bathroom stalls for each sex and then four additional bathrooms for family use. Was that correct?
There will actually be six per and then four family restrooms there.
And I presume that that's based on some kind of calculation of estimated number of.
So there's the international building code, which we have to follow and all of that. So that outlines how many we need per, and that's where we came up with that.
Okay, thanks. One more question. Concession stands besides food trucks, are they envisioned?
They would be included in this one. So, yep, right there would be where the concession stands are. And we have kind of an interior and an exterior window. So if maybe really hot summer days, they could roll up a door there and have folks come into that shaded area. And they could still go up to the concession stand or folks from outside could access it that way.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I just have a few. You said that the softball, baseball courts had access through gates. And I didn't see any gates. When we flew in on our.
Yep. So it's kind of hard to differentiate the gates between the actual fence. All of it would be like.
I understand that. So, so where is the access point?
The access point would be pretty much where you see like the fire and EMS access. That one's got to be at least 16 feet wide for fire apparatus and all of that. That kind of dotted line that goes all the way around. We're strategically placing gates there. It won't be accessible by the public, but city staff can go through any of those gates.
So all the public has to come from the parking lot?
Yes.
Yeah. Now, you know, you said we have capacity for 500 here and 500 here. And so you could have 1,600 people. You know, is that, I mean, do we have parking for that? It just seemed, I know they're not all going to drive a car, I mean.
Yeah, it would more be based on tournament play. So you would have all of your teams kind of playing at different times and then goes down to one final game. And that's where the code kind of tells. And that's where the code kind of tells us, that's where that 500 person limit would be. So we're just kind of anticipating those numbers dwindling down and the most we would ever have at any time would be 500.
Sure, I understand it. Um, I don't see how you can do soccer on those, I mean, you, you've got the pitcher's mound, you know, I mean,
Yep. So it would actually, those fields would be kind of, um, crossways in the outfield, so it wouldn't encroach on the infield at all.
So they're just sort of be temporary if you had some reason to need temporary soccer.
Much like they do now.
Yeah, yeah, we, we do similar today. We have, uh, we played flag football and soccer in the outfield of the current fields. And so they sit in here kind of angled like this, or depending on the size of the field, maybe you get two smaller fields. Uh, we are looking at portable mounds and that was a conversation with the district as well. So these would not be permanent, uh, mounds and on the two baseball fields. They'd be something we could move on and off. That meets their need, but it also meets the, the broader community need for different age groups and different activities that would occur on those two fields.
So you could also move the pitcher's mound closer or that kind of thing if you, you know. Yeah, I, and just when I saw the bleachers, um, there's enough seating for that many people and? Okay.
It may not be quite, the renderings are an image of what will look like.
Didn't look like, you know, I, and?
I'm Will Mann, I'm, uh,
You're the bleacher man?
One of the landscape architects on this project. Um, just to clarify on the seating, um, that 500 number is, um, achieved in different ways, not just permanent bleacher seating. And so, um, Garrett talked about that upper deck on the building. That's also an area where spectators can stand and watch games. There's also gonna be space along backstops and sideline fence where people can set up lawn chairs, which is actually a pretty popular way for spectators to, to view youth ballgames especially. And so when you see the, the images and the, the layout here, don't think of 500 permanent bleacher seats. Think of a combination of, of, of different kinds of viewing from the, from the spectator areas.
Okay.
Um, so, um, you talked about having, uh, soccer and flag football in the outfield. Can, can that warm-up area be big enough to use for that as well? Or is that just gonna be dedicated warm-up space?
Yeah, go ahead. I don't know if we would need it, but?
That would be dedicated to that space.
Okay.
So part of what you're about to make potentially a $15 million investment, right? So public access to the fields is probably going to stop compared to the way it is today. This is an opportunity to allow public access into a space in the park that would allow them to continue to do baseball work, either hitting or throwing. The only thing you kind of lose, and honestly, you could do some of it on that turf area, which is infield work. So that will remain intact that way year round to allow for that public access to go out and play and, and practice for, like me to take my son there and be able to throw BP and take pitches. So, um, part of the desire for that, uh, from the, at least my standpoint is it continues to provide public access to an activity that was traditionally done there while still maintaining and protecting the investment that the city's gonna make.
Got it. Okay. Um, and then have we looked at, like, I know we're looking at having natural grass in the outfield. Is there a maintenance cost involved in that and does that outweigh the cost to put in turf?
Turf, artificial turf and natural turf costs the same, basically, when you look at the, uh, tenure, uh, plan.
Okay.
It's whether you put your money up front or whether you put it in over time. Now, part of what will actually maybe tip the scales towards the natural turf is we will set these up for automated mowing. So we won't have the labor associated with cutting the natural turf areas. Um, and those mowers will be stationed kind of in the outfield and you can probably cut about two fields with each mower. They can travel between fields. They have paths that they can travel. A lot, they're pretty easy to maintain and they're relatively inexpensive. So, um, you know, depending on the tournament, we may run a, a field stripe mower out there. But generally speaking, the day-to-day will be covered through an auto mower.
Okay.
I mean, we've already got the robot painter, speaking of painting the, the fields. Uh, so that's done by automated robot now. We paint all our soccer and football fields with an automated robot.
I didn't know that.
Soccer field in 23 minutes. So it saves a lot of time and labor.
Yeah. Okay. And so I guess, you know, those robots can go at night too. So we're not having to worry about doing that during the day when we could be playing on the field.
Yeah, actually, it improves your playability because, uh, if you're cutting every night for a tournament, because they're, they're just gonna shave off a very top piece of it, you maintain that inch and a half to two-inch playing surface, which means the ball rolls consistently. We can run them through night, so every day of the tournament, they're playing the same way.
Okay. Um, and then, so, um, I'm assuming with the tennis courts, the, the multi-line for juniors and, and seniors, that's okay with USTA, uh, because it's the same sport, I guess. Uh, we're not competing. Okay. Got it. Um, and then what are we gonna do with the skate park?
Uh, I think our intent is to, uh, it, it's lived its lifespan already.
Right.
Um, our intent is to put in a concrete park and you'll probably see that show up in the movement MHK plan.
Okay.
And in particular, we've kind of identified the northeast corner of, uh, of City Park.
Okay. But there's not like an immediate, we're gonna remove this and then at the same time build the new one, so we'll have some, some time without a skate park?
I mean, there would be a funding issue there. You're gonna need about $2 million to build a proper, uh, skate park and pump track.
Okay.
So to say immediately, it would be a high priority that if we remove that, we would try to get one done as fast as we could.
Yeah, no, I think, I think having a replacement is, is really important. Um, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
I just echo that. Um, I think a skate park is vitally important. When I drive by CECO, I don't see people playing much of anything, but I see a lot of skaters. And I really think there must be a way to do it for less than $2 million. I know the one we built didn't cost $2 million. I mean, the skaters just need their thing. And $2 million, that's, I realize if you want to do it, fantastic, but, you know, just,
So I just built one.
And I don't think City Park is, is probably a good idea.
I just built one and it was, uh, before the escalation that we've seen in CECO, it was, uh, 1.2 million and that was for bare bones.
Well, 1.2 is better than two.
Well, that was before.
That was, and, and that also, uh, was part of what needs to be considered is, as we move forward, it needs to be accessible. If you're not familiar with it, I encourage you to YouTube something called Wheelchair X.
I have been involved with ADA things for a long time and been here when the city had issues with ADA things.
Oh, he's talking about people doing backflips in wheelchairs.
Yeah, so, so making sure that we provide a park that would be fully accessible, uh, as that's an up-and-coming sport.
It's pretty cool. Um, yeah, and I would just say, like, I know the one that we built, I don't know if it was budget or, or what, but, um, I've, I've heard from people that it used it even when it was new. It wasn't the best. And it was usable, but, um, it, it could have been a lot better. So I think, um, you know, we, we don't have a, a lot of problems with people skating around the mall or in, in, on public areas. And I think because we have provided that area and I have seen, um, in places where those can really be huge, huge community centers where kids who don't have anything else to do, even if they're not skating, they can just go hang out with people, with their friends. So I think that's really important that we get that replacement.
Don't really have any questions. Just say that I think it was a really good plan. The team did a good job. Now you just have to figure out that little money you got left, how to use it. I agree with that, John. And just to, to maintain focus, the skate park is not part of this plan and was never intended to be. That's gonna have to be a separate discussion, just so anybody out there watching, don't get confused. We're not building a skate park with part of this, because that wasn't part of the vote that was there, so. So I guess we can open this for public comment at this point. So for public comment, uh, anyone can come up, talk on the topic. You have a five-minute limit and please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Gail Urban and I, uh, serve on the CECO Park Advisory Committee. Um, I would like to address the skate park. We have recently, uh, created the Manhattan Parks and Rec Foundation. The skate park at a $2 million price tag would be a wonderful opportunity for this community to look at priorities that weren't planned in this project. And if we want a skate park, let's raise the money to build a skate park. Um, I, I think that's a challenge to our community, that if, if that is a priority, say so, speak up and open your wallets.
Appreciate that. Excellent comment. Anyone else wish to comment on the CECO Park project?
My name's Pamela Perato. I, I live at 3404 Cardinal Road, which is just between Denholm and, and Cedar Crest. So I'm a person who goes to CECO Park every day. Um, I've got two questions. And, um, one of which is, what are gonna be the provisions for funding and the, for the upkeep and the ongoing maintenance of this area? You know, you just have to see, you know, the present condition of the park, just in terms of, you know, everyday maintenance of it, whether it be, um, you know, the condition of the tennis courts or how, how are we to make sure that we've budgeted in for that ongoing, um, maintenance of the facility so that it could, it could last for the duration? And I guess my, my second question is, you know, what percentage of tax funds, whether it be what the taxpayers are paying for, for, you know, USD or city or county, will be expended for the ongoing maintenance and upkeep? I think that's something we really need to, um, keep sight of, just particularly as we, you know, see the condition of the, a park now, where just some really basic grooming, um, just is, you know, has lapsed over the many years. Don't want it to happen after we've expended all this money. So please keep that in consideration, please.
Okay, thank you. Excellent point. And anyone else wish to come forward and make a comment on CECO Park? Okay, seeing none, we'll, we'll close public comment. Commissioners, any other?
Only to say thank you for everyone who just responded to our questions.
Yeah, I think Erin, you might want to address, I, I, I think you, you sort of roundly addressed the maintenance thing. I think we, we've done some interesting efficiencies with the robotics. Because, uh, you know, part of the problem with, uh, you know, mowing, if you've got a robotic machine and you've seen the ones Blueville has out in the roundabouts, that seems to be a, a really great innovation and it's gonna save time and manpower. And then, you know, the other thing is CECO Park last year looked a little bit rundown. I think part of that was due to some water and sewer issues and so we decided just not to use it because we knew it was gonna be completely, completely renovated. And so I think some of that was a little bit intentional, but you could, you could expound upon that.
Yeah, so I think, um, there was probably some decisions made, um, probably during COVID to let things go as far as the upkeep of the facility. Uh, the sewer line is actually basically crushed and has to be redone. That's, we tried to get the restrooms up last year, but given that kind of investment with this coming right behind it, it didn't make sense. We are out there kind of trying to maintain the fields as well as we can. The irrigation systems in the outfield need to be replaced. So it, it's been minimal maintenance and I think there were some decisions around that, especially when they pushed all the programming to Annenberg. That's about the extent I know of the past, given my short tenure here. What I would say is part of the automated mowers, um, helps offset so that turf should look groomed every day. The benefit of having artificial turf on the infield is, uh, you can put higher use on that because there is a huge demand for field space. Um, it, it was brought up tonight. The school district will use it from 3:00 to 5:30 or so. Outside of game nights, we're gonna be right behind them at 6 o'clock with, uh, uh, I'm sure there's gonna be, um, competitive teams out there playing in, uh, March, April and May, uh, followed by our programming's kind of overlapping in May, uh, June and some of July. So, uh, there'll be heavy use on that. Again, good overseeing program. I can't speak to what percentage of the budget of tax dollars. I anticipate trying to create additional revenue areas. So when you look at that view deck, um, and you look at that open space where we're serving concessions to, those are revenue opportunities. You know, there's a, there's a higher cost to sit up on the view deck and have a concession area up there and have that better seat. We can create, um, uh, I mean, you, like, if we're hosting a tournament, you can create a tournament within a tournament. Do you sport gaming with inside that facility, um, where they show the interior of the building? So part of this is I hope to help offset some of the costs through revenue generation at that facility. We need to be hosting tournaments. We need to be bringing teams to town. But we also need to give a great place for our local youth to play. So Monday through Thursday, that's what that should be. And then Friday through Sunday, hopefully, we're, we're lining up, uh, some tournaments. I, I wouldn't anticipate in the first few years that we've got one every weekend, but I anticipate on us trying to fill those up, whether it's through us, uh, specifically programming it or, uh, through another entity, um, faci, and we're just facilitating that tournament for them. So the mowing ideally would be taken care of. We are gonna send staff to take care of the maintenance. Obviously, you're gonna have to clean restrooms, you're gonna have to pick up trash, all of that. So there's gonna be an investment in there. But hopefully, we can earn some of that revenue to offset, so it's not strictly a, a subsidized facility. Hopefully, that answered it.
Erin, I had a question about, um, with, with admission. So, you know, if we're hosting a travel ball tournament, um, we, the city would be collecting that admission and that's just a part of whatever organization is, is, is organizing that tournament. They just, we just, the, the attendees know to go to this tournament, you gotta pay five bucks or whatever to watch. Is that, is that right?
Yeah, so, uh, okay, there's, there's a couple different, I feel like you asked me a couple different things.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
If we're, if we're facilitating, meaning say a perfect game where somebody is hosting a tournament, they're just renting the facility from us and we're providing the services that go along with that rental. If we're the ones running the tournament, a, a gate fee is typically kind of, it's kind of an antiquated thing at this point. What you actually do is you charge the teams a gate fee and they just pay it when they pay their registration. So you don't have to man the gate and it, say, the tournament's $400, you'd put a $200 gate fee on there and then they're, they come and go as they please.
Okay, so the gate's really just to kind of, um, control access when we're not having any?
Yeah, because I could see us getting into a maintenance situation where we need to secure the facility. There's always times you need to be able to secure the facility. Ideally, or most prominent would be a maintenance situation. We need to secure the facility, uh, in, in restrict public access for that time.
Erin, I do think it'd be great to sort of put some numbers out there for maintenance because, you know, we got stung a bit with our added gyms and not having thought that out, who was gonna staff them. And also, I think we need to hear more about staffing. I know it's hard to find, um, teenagers in groups like that that want to work anymore in the summer. And so do we have people at those ball fields to run the, you know, the various things that teenagers run? So just in the future, and I realize it's hard to estimate, but I think we, we as a commission would like to know some maintenance numbers and?
Sure. I, I would push back on the staffing a little bit. If you do an active recruiting program, you can find staff. I'm not saying it's an easy thing to do. I'm just, you can find staff. We're, we, we're already staffed up for the summer.
No, I would echo that because the year that I announced we were gonna keep the pool open till Labor Day and Ron about had a fit, we did and we found staff. So let's, um, let's work on that.
Sure.
I have one question. It probably is for Wyatt. In terms of maintaining the grounds at the, at CECO, is there a centralized unit that does that or is the school district, the county and the city responsible for their respective parts?
Each entity is responsible for their respective areas, plus or minus a little bit, um, is the easiest way to say that. And those are longstanding practices and relationships. So we, we don't mark the property line and stop mowing at the property line. If it makes sense to continue to mow to the tree line, we, you know, because that's where the topography works, we, we do that. And each entity kind of manages different areas of the park, um, in that manner. manner.
Okay, and I got, I want to ask the city staff, do you need any other information from the commission? Or do you have what you need to proceed on?
The last piece we wanted to talk about was, Garrick talked about a overhead power line along Kimball Avenue, and potential conflicts with our new fencing and our new sports lighting. And I can pull it up on Street View if you would like to see it, or if you've driven by. The existing power lines that are there are fairly close to the existing sports lighting and fencing. Our project is going to push the fields a little further north and a little bit closer to those lines, if we build the size of the fields that we've shown you tonight, in the positions that we've shown you tonight. So we would recommend, from a safety standpoint, that we bury those overhead power lines, work with EverGee to do that. That allows us to maintain that safety aspect. It allows us to have the fields positioned and the size of the fields, all that, in the best positions possible. There is about an $800,000 price tag to bury that line. We have a, that is not part of the six to seven million additional amenities that we've talked about with the team and the advisory committee. So that would need to be sourced from somewhere else. We have an upcoming project along Kimball Avenue from Candlewood West to Hudson. It'll be a street repair project. We're still working out the timing of that, but we think that potentially burying that underground power could accompany that project, paid bonded interest fund, debt serviced over a period of time to handle that additional overage. And the timing of it could work out that we would be able to bury that with this project and then incorporate it into that future funding strategy. If we didn't bury the power lines, we're probably talking about shortening the outfield for the primary baseball field and shifting the secondary softball field potentially south, or shifting the entire complex south, which does put us into more of that drainage area, potentially more cut and fill, more earthwork cost. We don't have the numbers to compare that exactly tonight, but I, there would be, we do anticipate there would be some additional cost to move the facility, and some additional impact of programs to shorten the fields or adjust those fields. So certainly, we know we need to provide more detail, but if there's a consensus one way or the other to continue investigating burying overhead power versus not burying overhead power, that is the direction we would accept tonight.
Okay, so, commission, if everybody would just comment on that. So Wyatt's got an idea?
I think it makes sense, particularly if it can be coupled with the construction or roadwork that's going to be done.
Me too.
Yeah, I think whenever we have an opportunity to bury any overhead lines, we should probably do that. Just reduce the risk of it falling over, and yeah, it makes things safer.
Are you saying it's still $800,000? Even if we combine it, we're just going to get the advantage of being able to use the financing to pay for the project?
Yes, that's the advantage of coupling it.
Okay. The only I might say is, you know, we have to watch its debt service, it's everything else we have to do. We're saying this isn't part of the project, yet we have the one point, whatever, million dollars to get to 15. I don't know, maybe splitting it in half or something like that to take some off that debt service.
Yeah, my preferred option would be to bury it, but as John pointed out, I think the financing of that is also pretty critical, because it's sort of like mission creep. But also, if you shift these fields, you know, it may drive up the cost, you know, $400,000, half of what it would cost to bury that. So you got to balance all that. So I think generally, the commission would prefer they get buried, but we want to know the details of the money end of it.
Sure. Yeah, we can package a strategy and bring that back. Perhaps when we bring the guaranteed maximum price and the Phase II contracts, we can have a strategy outlined for the, not only the ball fields, but also the power lines.
Okay. All right, if that's all you need, excellent. Then we can end the discussion on this and move on to Item B on the agenda, which is Traffic System Master Plan Presentation.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Brian Johnson, City Engineer, along with Kurt Ruttering with Olson Associates. This item is a review of the Traffic Systems Master Plan. Public Works requested received authorization to publish an RFQ in 2022. From that RFQ, Olson Associates was selected, and four goals were identified. First one being review of the existing traffic signal system. Second one is review of the existing ITS systems. Third was review of the current operations of the Manhattan Traffic Operations Facility. And then fourth, how do we build on our foundation? Where do we go from here? Tonight's presentation will be a two-part item. I'll start first and go through some slides, give you an overview of how the Traffic Operations Division operates, and then Kurt will go ahead and get into detail within the plan and all the master plan items, and then we'll open it up for questions. So with that, agenda tonight, again, Traffic Department Summary, which is me. Kurt will take over then, do some background information, and then review the master plan, recommendations. So first, our organizational chart for the Traffic Department. We have the Traffic Superintendent. We have right-of-way permits, so that person writes permits for dumpsters, for utility cuts, for anybody that wants to do work in our right-of-way. Traffic Signals Operations folks, they're the ones that actually get inside the signal. They do the programming, the spot checking, the cleaning. They do all the work inside the cabinet. Then our Signs and Markings folks, they are the ones that paint all the streets, put up all the stop signs. And then our Electrical Department, they do everything from 480-volt power out at the plants to changing switches here in City Hall. So they do quite a wide range of abilities. Right-of-way permits, so in that division, we have one person, we just started that division here a couple of years ago. They write roughly 400 utility permits a year, along with 20 dumpster permits. They're the ones that enforce that ordinance. Our Traffic Signal folks maintain 77 traffic signals. And just to give you a scale of operations, when I got here in 2008, we had 41 traffic signals. We've almost doubled in the last 15 years. There's six HAWK signals, which we didn't have any in 2008, 10 rapid flashing beacons, pedestrian beacons or RRFBs, four pedestrian signals, and 40 school flashing zones. Our Signs and Markings Division, they maintain over 10,000 traffic signs in the city. There's literally over 10,000 signs in the city. They paint 91 school crossings in the city every year. They paint roughly 300,000 to 400,000 lineal feet of streets every year. And they paint about 50,000 square feet of pedestrian crossings also. So your school crossings, your pedestrian crossings, it signals, those sorts of things. Electrical Department manages all the city electrical, so streetlights, all the lights along points and in Aggieville, park lighting within City Park and within Annenberg, downtown lighting, Aggieville lighting, all of our parking lot lighting, and then also our garage lighting. So real quick, I'm going to go through some definitions so that we're all talking the same language. We've got the traditional traffic signal. We've got the pedestrian hybrid beacon, also known as a HAWK system. We've got the pedestrian signals. Then we got the rapid, rectangular rapid flashing beacons, the RRFBs, and then we also have the school zones. Your typical traffic signal is similar to this. There's all sorts of variations. There's protected lefts. There's free rights. There's merge lanes. There's single lefts. But they all basically follow the same system. You have a signal, the signal gives right-of-way to one person, stops another person. Pros and cons of these, the pros are, it assigns right-of-way. Somebody has a green, and they can go. Somebody has a red, they have to stop. They're pedestrian-friendly. The pedestrian hits the button, they get the walk sign, they get to go. The cons, one direction's always stopped. Somebody is always stopped at a traffic light. So half your traffic is stopped all the time. The crashes are also very high. Majority of deaths happen at signalized intersections, because your speeds are high, roughly speaking. Anytime you have speeds over 30 to 35 miles an hour in accidents, that's when fatalities happen. So at signalized intersections, usually somebody's either running a yellow light or a red light, and they're going faster than they should be. They're also very high maintenance. We have to clean them, maintain them, operate them several times a year, and they're getting quite expensive. They're over half a million dollars now. This particular system is probably close to a million today. So then we have our HAWK signal. This is kind of the next level down for assigning right-of-way or protection. This is for a pedestrian activated beacon, so the pedestrian hits the button, the lights flash yellow at first, then they flash red, then they go all red, and then the pedestrian gets a walk sign. So these are a little bit more protective for both the ped and the vehicle, because somebody has the right-of-way and somebody has to stop. So these are a little bit more efficient, a little bit safer. Again, the pros, they do assign a walk phase, so that pedestrian gets a walk hand, and they can go. It has a red light for the vehicle, so it's easy to determine that vehicle has to stop. You get a red light. Cons, they're a newer system, and so the drivers, there's some confusion with drivers, as when you can go and when you can stop. As these infiltrate more and more throughout the city, that confusion will certainly go down. They're a little bit higher delay for both modes, so the pedestrian pushes the button, and they have to wait for a walk, whereas if you push an RRFB, you get to go right-of-way. So there's a little bit more delay. And then, these also are getting quite expensive. When they first came out, about 12 to 15 years ago, they were under $100,000. They're getting close to a quarter million now. They're also a lot more complex. We can now put these in sync, and they can sync with each other. The ones that are in college are synced together. So if you push it, and it goes off, you push it again, it actually holds you. It makes you wait so that that traffic stream can clear. When they first came out, it was a push-and-call system. Push, call went, push, call went. So again, a little bit more advanced. Typical pedestrian signal, so this one is actually on Dennison, in front of the K-State dorms. There's also one up by Lee School on Anderson. These are the traditional pedestrians, push the button, lights green, yellow, red. Then it gives the call for the ped to go. These are, you know, obviously very simple. They work quite well, but they do lead to quite a bit of delay, because if you have one person push the button, they go across the lights red for a minute and a half while everybody's waiting. So again, the pros, they do assign specific right-of-way. They are protected movements, so they do protect that pedestrian. They're very friendly to the pedestrian. The cons, you know, one direction's always stopped. Either the car is stopped, or the ped stops. Somebody's always stopped, not going through the intersection. They do lead to higher rear-end crashes, because the fourth or fifth or sixth car back can't see that light. So everybody stops, and then that sixth or seventh car back is the one that has the accident. They're hard to coordinate. You have to have fiber optics to coordinate the systems together, so they're pretty complex to coordinate. And they're relatively expensive. They're about $100,000. They're getting more expensive, like everything else. A lot of it just depends on how much coordination you want in your controller. Your controller really drives that cost. If you have six or seven of these in a row, and you want to coordinate them all together, you got to connect them with fiber optics. You got to get the controllers that can talk to each other. So those costs obviously go up as you go. Then this is our rapid rectangular flashing beacon. We do have a couple that are overhead, like the one shown here is on Claflin. At the Health Department, there's another overhead at the Hudson Trail on Kimball. Typically, we do the overheads if we have more than two lanes, because that inside lane can't see the outside lane if somebody's stopped. So in those scenarios, we do go to the overhead. The ones on the right are what's up at the high school. They're the typical post mount, much less expensive. But again, if you have multiple lanes, it's hard to see that inside driver. So again, cons, peds don't have to wait, which is a big, that's a big con. The ped pushes the button, they walk right out. You hope the car's stopping. Sometimes they do. Sometimes they don't. Sometimes they run it, because they think it's a red light or a yellow light. We do have a lot of fatalities at these, and we're actually starting to phase these out and go to either the full signals or the Hawks, because of the fatality issues we've had. There is a big confusion on who waits. You know, when you push the button, it flashes. Do I wait? Do I go? Is the car going? Is the second car back going? Who's going? Who's staying? They're a little bit more dangerous. So we're phasing these out a little bit as we go throughout the city. Again, both ped and vehicle crashes go up, and unfortunately, when the ped crashes happen, they're usually fatalities or serious injuries, because the car's accelerating to get through the yellow light. The good news is, they're very easy to use. They're very pedestrian-friendly, and they're very inexpensive. If you have them at certain locations, like the high school, where you have older children crossing that know to look for cars, as opposed to elementary kids, you know, they work okay. They're still a little bit dangerous, and we really are very, we review the area where we put these in pretty substantially. We kind of shy away from installing these. Again, then the school zone signals, we, if Eric's here, we coordinate with 383 every summer, and come up with school zone times and flashers. We only put these on arterials and collectors. So the local street gets the sign that says, "School Zone, 20 miles an hour, 8:30 to 9:30," or whatever the timeframe is. Again, very inexpensive, readily enforceable. We write a lot of tickets in school zones. I know RCPD does a really good job with school zone enforcement. And on arterials and collectors, they work quite well. So this is your typical traffic control cabinet. When I try to explain to these people, to people, I usually say, it's like putting five laptops outside, outdoors, in a cabinet in the summer heat, in the rain, in the winter. There's literally laptops inside of here that are running all the time, 24/7. In the upper left, there's, that's our video card or video detection. The monitor's in the middle, and then down below is all of your, what's called your conflict monitor. That is looking for conflicts in the signal. So if you have two greens at the same time, the conflict monitor goes off, puts it in flash. If you have two reds at the same time, two yellows at the same time, that's your conflict monitor, and it's looking for false calls or areas where you have double calls. Again, the advantage is, it does assign right-of-way. Somebody has a green light. Somebody has a red light. Very pedestrian-friendly. Again, the cons, one direction's always stopped. Somebody's always stopped at a light. Video detection works really well, and, you know, those sorts of additional add-ons to these make them operate very efficiently. The bad thing is, they're very expensive. Video cards are $40,000, $50,000, and they get hit by lightning quite often. We have to replace them. So now to our painting section. So our painters paint about 70 miles of roadway each year. Our existing painter is very inexpensive, and it's truck-mounted. It does not do any pre-cleaning on the street. It doesn't pre-treat or pre-clean the lines. We paint over the existing line. When we paint for roughly about seven cents a foot, which is incredibly cheap, we paint all of the city for about $25,000. That's all it costs. Contract painting is about $3 a foot. And we used to budget about a half a million dollars every year to contract paint our arterials and collectors, but due to budget cuts, we haven't been doing that for three or four years. We paint them with our paint machine. We did have a, we did put a paint truck in CIP last year, and it got cut. Those are roughly about $600,000 to upgrade to the next level. And you have to have a building to put them in. So you're going to have to have another half a million dollar building to put them in. They have pumps in them. They're water-controlled, so they can't freeze at all. They're quite expensive, but they do a really great job. If you look at our new streets, so all of our new streets, we grind them, we clean them, and then we paint them. Those new streets last four or five years, and they look great, because we have the equipment to go out and do it. But this machine is very inexpensive, and it does a really great job for what you're paying.
So what did we paint Kimball, like the newer parts of Kimball, like in front of the stadium?
Yeah, so all of the new projects, and I got another slide in here. All of our new projects, we use either what's called a cold plastic system, or we grind and paint with those. And anytime you can get that paint ground down below the surface of the pavement, it lasts a lot longer. Again, our signage, our signage department, they maintain about 10,000 signs throughout the city. We are required by federal law to test them each year for reflectivity, and then we mark down the date and time that they were tested. And then all of our signage conforms to the MUTCD requirements. So real quick, that's kind of our overview of the Traffic Department. I'm going to turn it over to Kurt, and I'll follow up with questions later.
Yeah, thanks, Brian. Kurt Ruttering, Traffic Engineer for Olson, Project Manager for this team. I was a little offended that everybody left when this project came up. But I'm going to zoom in a little bit if I can find... I was a little offended that everybody left when this project came up, but I'm going to zoom in a little bit if I can find. That's not the button I wanted, but we'll get there. So Brian talked about everything involved with the traffic department. I'm going to talk about this project and specifically what we did and where we ended up with this project. The main goal, as Brian said, of this project was to look at everything that the city has done really well over the last 20 years as they built out the system. As Brian said, you've doubled the signals in the last 15 years. You've built out communication systems, done a lot of good things. Now we want to look at what you have, where the gaps are that we have today and where we want to take the, the traffic system for the next 10 plus years. There's a lot of change happening in the, in the traffic industry, as you all know, when you're hearing about connected vehicles, autonomous vehicles. I feel like traffic engineers are more like computer engineers than, than civil engineers anymore because of the, the brains and the computers in those, in the cars and in the signal cabinets. So. We, I'll talk, go through three different aspects of this, this plan, the signal system itself, the ITS network and the operations facility. And I'll dig in and define those more as we go. The first two parts, the signal system and the intelligent transportation system. So for the traffic signal system, and I'll dig in even deeper, so don't worry about the high level right now, but we looked at all of the existing conditions, what's out there in the field, so we know what we're starting with. And then with what we have today, provide recommendations on top of that. So how do we improve what we have today? What's wrong out there that we need to get better immediately? And then build recommend, or a prioritization schedule for replacing the signals. What order should we place them? How fast should we place them, et cetera? And then on the intelligent transportation system, kind of the same aspect, look at what we're doing today. Look at best practices around the country for similar sized cities. Bring those back, provide recommendations for the city and then looking into the future with the new technologies. So traffic signal systems. I won't go through these numbers. Brian went through them already. But this is a screenshot of the GIS that we use to collect all of our data. So these are all the, where the signals, the ped crossings, school zone flashers are. We went out there, took pictures of everything, documented everything that's out there, did a structural review and a non-structural review. Put it all in GIS. The city has all this GIS information. We also have a huge spreadsheet with all this information in it as well, that the city has as well. And they can continue to update that and keep this as almost their asset management for their signal system. So structural review. We have a non-destructive testing team that, they're certified structural staff that go out and look at the poles and the concrete foundations, identify safety concerns that are out there or small minor things that could be fixed by city staff in a week. But we document all these things and prioritize, this helps us prioritize replacement of the signals. If we know something needs seriously addressed in the next year, we call that out or if it can wait a couple of years. And we'll just put it on the prioritization list and go through there. The non-structural review, you get another picture inside of a cabinet of all the fun wires and computers and technology in there. But we opened every single cabinet out there, took photos of everything, documented how old these, this equipment is in there. It's all still working or is it not working? Is detection at these signals working? What type of everything is in there? Just so we have a full picture of all the existing conditions out there. One thing I mentioned is detection. Kind of a, a story and history of detection throughout the city. A lot of people know about the loops underneath the pavement. That was the old way before we got the newer technology. About 10 to 20 years ago, the city started doing video detection and that's the old ITARIS video detectors. Those detection is starting to go, lifespan of those detectors starting to go out, so the city's starting to replace those. And with their new signals we're putting up, we've also moved into newer ITARIS video detection. They've, there's a few intersections out there with the FLIR thermal cameras. And then the most recent and what they've decided to go to is the GridSmart video system. I know these words don't, doesn't really matter. But the, but the GridSmart video system is just one camera that sits up there and can see all four approaches and see the cars coming in. It's a lot easier to install and it's cheaper because it's only one camera, so. So now to the recommendations. I'm not going to read all this. I know it's a little tiny text, that's why I wanted to make sure it's bigger. This was all in your packet if you want to dig in deeper. But we provide a short term and mid to long term recommendations for all of the five categories and more in the report itself. Some highlights, there were on the RRFBs and pedestrian flashers. There was 15 poles that we identified needed some structural attention. The city has already gone out and repaired all those 15 things. It was like loose bolt covers or a hole in the side of the pole that could easily be patched over. Controllers, those are those computers that are in the cabinets that Brian was talking about. There's some really old controllers out there in the old signals. The city has already been going through and replacing those with budget to the newer, to the newer signal, or controllers. And those allow you to do more advanced things with the signals, more efficiencies, et cetera. So more of the long-term side of things is continue to maintain that software and that firmware of these signals. Keep an eye on the structural aspects of all your poles and then also with signal timing. Go through your main corridors, your arterials and update the signal timings, so you get that progression of greens as you go down the corridor. Look at those every five years maximum because traffic changes, uses change, things like that. Then we also put together a prioritization schedule. The lifespan of traffic signal is 25 years and with 80 traffic signals and pedestrian hybrid beacons, that's about three to four a year. If you have them on a regular schedule. So we kind of put a prioritization schedule of all these signals over the next 25 years to replace them all. I know there's a lot of signals out there that are older than 25 years, but that's the general thought on replacement. So moving into the intelligent transportation system, or I'll call it ITS. This is collecting data and providing data back out to the, the city and to the traveling public and ways to convey that data back and forth. It's important. It increases efficiency. It helps with city responses with emergencies and weather and also helps with day-to-day traffic management. There's kind of four categories where I'll walk through on these. And so the ITS field devices, those are the things that collect the data, but also convey the data back out. Don't hit the mic. Network infrastructure is the, the cable that conveys that data back and forth between things. Software is to manage the data. And then the traffic operations facility is where the staff keeps an eye on the data and pushes it out and brings it in, so. I'm going to walk through a handful of, of these field devices. I'm going to keep this pretty high level. I could nerd out on these if you want me to, but I won't today, so. This, the first one is the RWIS, which is the road weather information set, system. The city currently has two of these stations. They, they're little weather stations. They're actually pretty inexpensive, but they, they tell you air temperature, pavement temperature, road temperature, humidity, all that stuff. And that can all be helpful if you're deciding, is it time to put out salt on the roads today? Or can we hold off and save that, that money for the next snow event? Traffic data, we're all talking about how data is important with anything we do. We need data to make decisions. There's endless amounts of data out there right now. The city already has detectors out there to help collect some of that. We provided information on how to collect more of that or where more sources of data are and what you could use that data for. We already talked about detection cameras, but we all, there's also traffic observation cameras. These allow you to see down the corridors, see where accidents are. If someone calls in and says, hey, something's going on, the city staff can pull up these cameras from their facility and see that without having to drive out to the, to the signal to actually, to fix the problem and they can fix it right there where they're at. So these are for, good for monitoring. The city is deploying these on all new signals as it is today, so. In good shape there. Dynamic message signs, you can see one and kind of faded in the background of the slide. That's a permanent installation. The city doesn't have any permanent installations. But you do use the portable ones on game day traffic and if there's road construction. So we provided some recommendations on, on how to improve the use of those, those DMS boards. Because those are just ways to, easy ways to convey information about the traffic and the roadway network to the public as they're coming in. And then the last one, Brian already mentioned, school zone flashers. That's another way to convey information, so we just have some recommendations on how to make those better and connect them in. Network infrastructure. So again, this is communication. How do we get that data from those devices? Back to the facility and then back out to the traveling public or the city to use that data. There's three main ways, fiber optic, wireless and cellular. The city uses all three in different, different ways. Fiber optics the most reliable and has the, the best throughput. Where wireless has issues with weather and other radio system, radio frequencies providing, they get in the way of it. Right now, the city uses a combination, like I mentioned, of both wireless and fiber mainly with cellular here and there for small aspects. So we provide recommendations to build out the communications system. And jumping ahead to future-proofing the system, this is the best way to be ready for the future technologies is providing communications. All that data that we're going to get in, all that communication that those cars want to do with the infrastructure needs a way to communicate and talk back to the facility and between the signals. So we provided two recommendations, both include a fiber backbone. I'm going to jump kind of back and forth between these two. The first one uses fiber to build out all the signals. The second one uses fiber for the, the main backbone and then uses wireless, which is a cheaper system to connect to the, the further signals and pull them in, so. And then software, so to manage your assets of all your ITS information, all that data coming in and out. There's all sorts of software and user interfaces that help manage all that information and provide information to the traveling public as well as the people managing the system. So we have recommendations, short and long term, on what software's best practice out there, what you don't need and how best to use it. And then, yep, this is my last slide. Before I get to the summary, but the, then the city asked us to look at the operations facility. How are they using it today? How could they improve the use? What else could we do with that facility? To, to better use the space and to better manage the traffic and provide the efficiencies operations we're looking for. If we build out this communications network and keep improving our technology. So we provided kind of the priority, what does operations facility need to do? And then some short-term and long-term recommendations of where it could get to in the future as we're looking to improve what we already built on. So in my summary, and then I'll hand it back over to Brian for a second. Basically, our recommendations include build up the communications network because that's how you future-proof the, the system. Brian will talk about budgeting here a little bit more, but to have a consistent budget for replacing signals and your equipment. You don't want to not do anything for 15 years and have 10 signals that are failing. And you have to have a huge chunk of your budget to replace those. You want to stay ahead of those signals. Expand the uses of that operations facility. It's, it's there. It's a great facility. Let's, let's, let's make, use it to its full ability. And then utilize technology because we know it's coming to, or utilize future technology, utilize today's technology. Because there's a huge return on investment using technology to increase capacity and operations and throughput of vehicles and pedestrians versus keep adding lanes. So with that, I'll hand it over to Brian and then I think we'll take some questions.
Thank you Kurt. So real quick on the financing section. Currently, all CIP operations funding is through the general fund for the traffic division. Their budget is approximately 1.3 million dollars a year. The street sales tax, maintenance sales tax ends in 2026. And one of the options is you could add a point oh one up to a point oh five onto that point two in order to generate a quarter to half million dollars a year to look at all of those deficiencies that were in the master plan and come up with a steady stream of revenue in order to replace those things and to increase efficiency throughout the network. CIP for about a million dollars a year would finish out our fiber optic ring. It'd also help with some signalization improvements on Anderson where we currently have quite a bit of delay between 11th and Sunset. And then we could also expand and have somebody dedicated in the MTOF for traffic control. With that, I guess I'll stand for questions or happy to elaborate on anything else.
Yes, Commissioner.
I have a few questions.
Okay.
So in the report and in your recommendations, you talk about building out the fiber optics network. WTC recently announced that they were extend, extending fiber optics throughout the city. Is that something that you, a resource you can piggyback on? Is it not compatible with what your needs are?
So historically, we've talked with both WTC, AT&amp;T and the one that the school uses, I think it's IFN. So there are companies out there that will rent you fiber. It's based on how much data you push. Historically, we've looked at that and it's not very cheap. It's pretty expensive. And then the connections are the other issue because we have to connect the controller to the fiber. So that's a possibility, maybe as an interim. But long-term, you know, like anything else that you rent, it's going to get cost prohibitive over time.
Relative to the costs of installing new fiber optics, is it, I'd like to see, you know, a comparison.
And what we've been doing is any of our roadway construction that we've done, sidewalks, roadway, we've put fiber optic in with that project. So we do have a pretty good conduit system that doesn't have fiber in it yet. We still have to pull the fiber through it, but we have a, a pretty good start on our conduits throughout the city. We've been piggybacking that.
I had a similar question. I was just, you know, I don't know if, maybe we could do some coordination with, with the physical installation as they're going through.
Yeah.
If they're digging a hole, can we put some conduit down there too? I think, I don't know if there might be an opportunity for that.
That's what we've been doing along North Manhattan, along Kimball College, Dennison. All of those, as we've been working on those streets, we've been adding conduits, so we can pull fiber later. The conduit, the boxes, the controllers, everything's there. It's just a matter of pulling that fiber.
I think if I understand you, Peter, it's also, could we build on, SWTC is doing some of that construction. Not only for city, city projects.
Typically, those companies, when they come in and they do fiber optic work, the majority of the time they're boring their fiber in. So we can't save a ton of money because they got to bore a separate hole. But in open cut situations, yeah, we have partnered before.
Thanks. In the report also, you talked about K-State looking possibly to some collaboration on areas around campus.
That's me again. We actually do, we actually backbone off of K-State right now. Everything along Dennison Avenue, the fire department, all of that, that data comes down Dennison and actually goes through K-State and then back over into our system at 11th and Blumenthal. So we do quite a bit of collaboration with them also. You know, they have a, they have a very good system, but it's only from Dennison to Claflin or Dennison to North Manhattan. So it's a really short area, but we do have an agreement with them that we signed, gosh, probably 2009, 2010, where we actually do piggyback on some of their fiber.
I was also thinking, they were talking about parking space management, I believe in the report. Wyatt, could you, could I ask you a question? Would this, I'm sorry, maybe it's Jared. Jared? So the report calls for, or suggests that there might be some opportunity to collaborate with K-State. Perhaps on portable signage regard, you know, that you mentioned regarding conditions during game day or other events. Is that something that would be appropriate to bring up in town gown meeting?
Potentially. I mean, your, your parking signage and, and traffic barricades and all that stuff is at the traffic shop, right?
Yeah, it's portable. The plan talks about having a dedicated, something on Dennison or Kimball that's dedicated for that space that doesn't move. And that's, I think that the heart of your question is, could you work with K-State and have that done? Absolutely. In fact, we coordinate with them now for signage for games, football games, baseball. We had some signage out for baseball the other day. For the NCAA tournament, we had signage out. They're just portable. They're not permanent. The, the plan calls for something permanent, which would be really nice to do. It would be nice to have some permanent. We have talked with KDOT about adding some permanent signage on Seth Child. We have to go through a permit process and there's a lot of hoops to go through. But we have had those conversations with KDOT also about having some permanent signage on Seth Child for, you know, stadium traffic, stay on Kimball. But we have had those conversations with K dot also about having some permanent signage on Seth Child for, you know, stadium traffic, stay on Kimball. Or if there's an accident on Kimball, stadium traffic, go on Claflin. So we have had those conversations also with K dot.
Could you talk a little bit, you mentioned that, um, this would be consistent with the Flint Hills Metropolitan Planning Organization's future plans? And I, I apologize, I just wrote down, uh, the regional T M C and I forget what the T M C stands for.
Yeah, I can expand on that. T M C Traffic Management Center. It's another name for what we call the M T O F, the operations facility. The, the region, the M P O has an I T S, long-term I T, I T S plan. And in that plan, um, it mentions a potential regional operations facility that looks at traffic from Fort Riley to Amigo through Manhattan and everything in between. So one of our recommendations, long-term recommendations, um, based on that M P O's plan is to see if there's an opportunity to partner with M P O, with Fort Riley, to utilize the, um, M T O F to be that regional traffic management center to, um, I know there's, or to look at, is there a bunch of traffic coming off the interstate, um, near Fort Riley and Junction City? How do we watch that traffic or how do we direct things? And it's just kind of a, a regional look at traffic versus just city by city. So that's where that came in.
I'd, I'd encourage any kind of collaboration that you could do in that regard. I have two last questions. One is, um, the report indicated that staff, staff time is limited, um, at the, uh,
Operations Facility?
Yeah, correct.
And that you recommend that there be a dedicated part-time or full-time F T E. I imagine we'll see that in your budget request.
At some point in the future, yeah, because we would not only like to have it operation from eight to five. We'd also like to have it operating seven to nine for basketball games and from six to eight for baseball games. And there's just a lot of things that happen after five o'clock that generate traffic McCain does. You know, all of those things that you could help coordinate systems and help coordinate throughout the system. It'd be nice to have somebody there for that, that timeframe.
Thanks. My last question is, um, I believe there's an unfinished light base at the, or at the, at this traffic circle, uh, Fourth Street and Blument.
So there's several bases there. Uh, there's actually streetlight bases that have got hit. Those poles are not manufactured anymore and we're having a really hard time getting them. We're probably going to switch to a different manufacturer. The last ones we ordered were 400 days for delivery and they were almost $20,000 apiece. So I think there's about five poles that are down there. We obviously don't want to spend that kind of money, so we're looking for some alternatives. We'll probably end up moving those streetlights back farther from the curb also in the future. We actually have a project we're designing now to move those poles a little bit, get them a little bit farther back. But, uh, yeah, we have several lights out there.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, I have some questions. Um, okay, so talked about the paint truck and we had to make some cuts because of our budget this year. What's kind of the, I mean, the, is, is the, using the, would, if we were able to buy the paint truck, would we be able to have more durable lines on the road?
Yeah, so if you, if you upgrade to that next level of truck, it has a grinder on the front of it. It sweeps up the grindings, pulls them into a, into a tube, hauls them off. And then on the back end, it paints. So it grinds that old paint off. It grinds down into clean, fresh concrete and then it paints it. That's why your new traffic's paintings last so long. As you go out there before you open the road, you sweep the road off, you wash it off, you grind everything in and then you're painting fresh. Uh, just like your house when you're painting your house. You know, if you paint fresh drywall, it lasts a lot longer than if you paint the fourth coat. Uh, it's kind of the same philosophy.
So, so what's kind of the long-term costs of, you know, if, if we're using just the truck, the, the painter that we have now, what's kind of the long-term cost of that versus being able to buy them?
So that existing palletized painter is about $65,000. They make it about 10 years and then your pumps start getting, you know, you just start putting a lot of maintenance into them.
Well, I'm talking about like, uh, as far as the, the surface goes.
Comparing and contrasting.
Okay.
The, the more expensive truck, again, you get about 10 to 12 years out of it. Uh, you, you paint about the same amount of paint because we only have so many streets to paint.
Sure.
But your quality goes, goes a lot better in March, April and May, like now, when our lines are starting to fade because we've been plowing snow all winter long.
Yeah.
Those lines will last longer and they'll look better.
Brian, and talk about the personnel for both.
Yeah. So currently we have four people that paint, uh, when we go out and paint with a palletized painter. We have one person in the truck driving, one person, uh, running the machine, hitting the button to paint. Then we have two people behind them. One has an arrow board. And then last year, we actually added a V M S sign about two blocks in advance and say, painting underway, you know, don't cross. You, you would have to add another crew member because you got to have five people to paint with that bigger truck. But it's really the cost of the vehicle that, I mean, a $600,000 investment's a big number.
Yeah, sure.
And you really get the same volume of paint out that you do. You don't paint anymore. You just have a higher quality of paint.
And would that allow us to paint less though?
No, you're going to paint every year with both of them.
Okay.
Because you don't want to take the chance that that second year in November, you plow all your paint beads off and then you're, you can't paint November, December, January because it's too cold. So you don't want to take that chance that you have something happen in November. You want to paint that again in September so you make it through the next year.
Brian, in years we've possibly got behind, have you brought contract in to paint?
Yeah, yeah, and it was in that, uh,
Yeah, it was like $3 a foot.
Yeah, and we used to spend about a half million dollars a year to bring contractors in and paint, half to three quarters. Starting in about 2017, we started scaling that back just because of budgets.
But we're still able to paint?
Same volume.
Okay.
It's just not as high of a quality.
Okay. So really the, the investment in the new truck would just be to have the higher quality?
Higher quality.
I mean, really, it's kind of a safety issue, right? Like if we don't have the lines, if the lines aren't lasting all year and people can't see it, especially, I know, like driving down Kimball and if it's wet and it's nighttime, you cannot see those lines.
This time of year because we have gravel still on the road from the winter and the, they don't reflect really good. But we, you know, we bead all of our paint. All of our paints beaded. It all needs reflectivity when we test it in the fall. It's through the winter when we plow and we plow all those beads off and, and we just abuse it with plow trucks.
Okay. How's the, the purple traffic lights? Do we have any more of those in Manhattan?
Oh, the streetlights?
Yeah.
Those are actually, those are actually managed through Ever G.
Okay.
Ever G's been going through and changing them out. Uh, if you see some, send us or report it.
My street. In front of my house.
Okay. Send me an address tomorrow and I'll forward it to Ever G.
And then, okay, so we talked about a lot of signals and stuff like that, uh, specifically with school zones. I know, like you were talking in the law board about having trouble people, uh, trouble with people speeding through those and wanting to make that a little bit safer. Are there other things besides signals that cities are doing to kind of reduce that natural conflict between vehicles and pedestrians? Because I mean, with the size of a lot, of a lot of vehicles, even if you're driving 20 miles an hour, if there's a, an accident, especially with a kid, um, it's not going to be good, even if you're driving the speed limit. So what, what kinds of things can we look at to try and reduce that?
So I guess for us, if we needed, and we've done this before, if we need more enforcement, we'll put up a speed trailer that, uh, our speed trailers detect both time and speed. And then we break that down and we send that data to R C P D. We say between eight and nine o'clock, we have 27% of our speeders. So then we can really help them narrow down the time of enforcement so that they don't sit out there all day and write three tickets. You can maybe sit out there an hour and write five tickets. So we do share that data with them. We have four speed trailers now. We have four speed trailers and we have two post-mounted, uh, signs also. Uh, we had them up on Kimball that also detect speed and time. And that really helps us make the most of the time that R C P D has to go out and write tickets.
Sure.
As far as other cities, I've seen some 10 mile an hour zones. Again, it all boils down to enforcement. You know, if you can't enforce that speed.
Winn just wants to put cameras out, automate the tickets, take care of it that way.
But I feel like enforcement only goes so far. Is there anything that we have for prevention?
Calming devices.
I think, I think that we should bring up calming devices because there, there are a lot of places in California where they put in the interstices of schools, painted Aztec suns or things on the pavement and found that calming devices definitely slow people down.
Yeah, and that's, that's where I was going to go. There's, the three E's are education, enforcement and engineering. And the calming devices is the engineering side of it. And yeah, there's ways to narrow the road, put a refuge island in the road, ways to visually make drivers uncomfortable, even if there's not a pedestrian there, so they're physically forced to slow down. Then, and there are communities doing that. Um, I live in Overland Park and there's, they've put bulb outs and narrow the things. So your, your driving lane is nine feet wide and it's, um, you can only, you can do those better on the, the side streets. I'm thinking like Lee Elementary is on Anderson, Blument.
Yeah.
And, and that's on a main road, so you can't put islands in the middle of that road, but maybe there's other ways to slow traffic as you're.
We have some bulb outs down on Pierre at Manhattan Catholic. We added some bulb outs there because again, they're not on a major street with a truck route, so the trucks can turn in and out. Those sorts of things.
You're always going to have the conflicts just because where the school district boundaries are.
Sure.
But there's physical ways to, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think, I think that's something that I really like for us to, to look at because, um, again, you know, enforcement only goes so far. And, uh, you know, it only takes one person not being enforced to, to have a really bad accident, so.
Yeah, and I think just to, to piggyback on that, um, there are communities that have street art, so to speak, that have found that that's positive and, you know, it'd be something that maybe you could do with the schools involved in the, you know, I just came from the deal art committee and there are dollars to do, to drive some things like that. First of all, I'd like to say, I think you've got somebody in your office that makes all the lights red when I get to them. Could you please, no, seriously.
Do you want the?
You know, something that really struck me when, yeah, when, when, um, points didn't have, points in Juliet didn't have traffic signals for a while because something was going on. And I thought it worked so well.
It did work well. It worked well because it was the summertime.
Yeah.
Uh, once school comes in and you got the school buses, you got buses trying to cross Juliet along with school kids trying to cross Juliet.
It didn't work as well.
That's a little different story.
Okay, I'm just thinking, you know, so often we have to go to mechanize things and, and, um, you know, the, I, there, there should be other ways to, um, to have people work together to get to point A to point B. But I do think that stressing the pedestrian safety, obviously, if you've got, you know, a pedestrian and a car. And of course, we also have to think about bike safety in Manhattan.
Yep.
I mean, more and more people are riding their bikes, which is really good and we want to see it. But, you know, we really, sometimes it's pretty scary. Also, this is just a side question. It used to be a deal where you could, um, get city paint to do your, your curbs if, if, does that still happen?
Yeah, that still happens. You can contact, uh, either the traffic department or in the engineering department and we can get you some yellow paint to paint, uh, your curb next to your driveway. We probably have 30 to 50 people a year take advantage of that.
Okay, that's cool. Yeah, yeah. I think it's important that neighborhoods know that because often you don't get to them. I know that the, the paint you use now is, is to some degree reflective.
Well, not only the paint is, we also put glass beads in it.
Yeah.
So that it reflects.
That really helps.
Yep.
What about, is there any movement to, to doing some turning areas in reflectiveness?
They're reflective too. Yeah, so you're talking about like the chicken tracks?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, those are painted just like any other paint. They're painted and then they're beaded when the paint comes down. The majority of your wear and tear on paint is when you turn. If you get long line, like on the interstate, you know, you can go forever in the line, right? Because nobody's crossing that. It's the turning movements that really, really chew into your paint and really, really eat it up.
I've been some places and they have like little flags in the road. Is that just a cost thing?
No, it's a plow thing. I would love to do it too, but we would put them all at the curb.
Oh, yeah, makes sense. I, I was in Florida when they had that.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And not only do they like give you white when you're driving, but if you look in your mirror, they're red. So that if you end up coming on the wrong way, it's, it's red and it shows you you're going the wrong way. They're a great design, but they don't work real great in Kansas. I'd love to do them though.
Yeah, makes sense.
Uh, back to your question about, uh, the bulb outs and those sort of, I just thinking, we did do several of those with the safe rostered school plan. So the safe rostered school plan, we actually just, just updated it. There's a dedicated funding source. We did some bulb outs up by Gary, up off Gary with, uh, Amanda, Amanda Arnold School. So there's some up there. We did the bulb outs down on Pierre. We have done maybe a dozen or half dozen of those throughout the city with the safe rostered school plans.
Have we looked at any other crosswalks along college? That goes east and west, right? I can't remember if it's college or south. It might be Claflin then. Uh, that goes past the, the medical center and.
Yeah.
Cause I know there are, there are kids that live on the south side of that street that go to like Mar-a-Lata, Mar-a-Lata. There's not a safe route to walk.
There's a ton of kids. In fact, years ago, we tried to put a sidewalk on the south side of Claflin uh, from the health department, uh, all the way to college. And we had some issues with ride away with the Riley County Historical Society. And so that's why that sidewalk stops where it does because we don't have the ride away through there. But we, we did add some sidewalk with, um, the Tecumseh Corvada Drainage Project. That was all, we put a new sidewalk on the south side of Claflin there. And then we have the, the crossing also was done with that stormwater project.
Just one last thing, the Hudson Trail light, wow, that is really important because I drive through there and there's no way you can see people walking across that trail.
And that huge hill, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a great light. Keep that.
Yeah, we get some complaints on that, actually about this time of year, uh, middle of March and middle of, uh, September because the sun's coming up over that hill and as you're driving east, that sun is just blinding. Really hard to see the pad, especially on the north side. So when we do, I heard him talking about C E C O and redoing Kimball in a couple of years. We're going to relook at that light and maybe go to a hawk signal or some other type of signal that's a little bit more reflective. Uh, it works great except for about two weeks out of the year when that sun is directly eastwards.
I have one last.
Yeah.
Point, I think. Um, the commissioners recently received a rather heated letter from a constituent about the, um, roundabout on Kimball. Is it by Colbert Hills?
Oh, yeah.
Is, is that nearly finished?
Yes.
That's complete. That was the complaint about no, uh, streetlights and they're all done.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's lit now.
Yeah, that, that thing's great. I drove through it the other night.
It's been lit pie a month.
Yeah.
It was in our mail folder.
It was in the mail today. It was.
Oh, okay, yeah. It's been lit for pie four to six weeks.
This was more a, a complaint about allocation of resources.
Oh.
And where things were being spent in the city.
Okay, well, that, that roundabout was in incredibly horrible condition. We went to the commission, 2020, I think it was in the COVID year. And we basically that laid out three options. One was rebuild what we have, about three quarters of a million dollars. Two, bulldoze it and go to a traffic signal. Or three, rebuild another roundabout. And the direction we got then was to rebuild another roundabout. Yeah.
I completely agree. It's, it's great. I've been, I can't tell you how many times I would be behind a truck in the earlier version. Pretty much just watch them drive over it.
No, we did get some streetlights on it. They've been on probably four to six weeks. It's been quite a while.
At least four weeks.
Yeah, so, and then we added some lights going up Grandmere also because that was a pretty dark, dark area also. So we try to, you're actually going to see a commission item here in April. We usually install the streetlights separate from the roadway project because if I do it separately, Ever G will put in the light for free. If I do it with the roadway project, I got to pay the contractor. So we always come back after the project's over and have Ever G put that streetlight in because it's a free cost. That's, that's why we do it that way. And I know it's odd because we open up a roadway and it's really dark and everybody's wondering why it's so dark. Well, it's because we don't want to pay a quarter million dollars to put the streetlights up.
I got just one general question. People ask me this all the time and I'm not really sure how to answer it. They complain about. They complain about the sequence of the traffic lights.
Sure.
And, and they wanna know, okay, are they on timers or are they computer controlled or is it a combination of the two?
So it's a great question and I'm glad that you asked it actually. So with this master plan, we actually updated our corridor timing plan. So Fort Riley Boulevard, Kimball, Anderson, your major arterials where you can get a long run, you can have a corridor plan that sequences that platoon of traffic through. So we did update our corridor timing plans with this master plan. So hopefully they're gonna be working a little bit better. His or Kurt's comment about taking data every five years, we actually started taking data every two years. Because businesses change, something comes in, something leaves. Starbucks builds somewhere and I got four hundred cars in the AM that I'm trying to, so we're, we've been taking traffic data every two years now at every signalized intersection. We'll take that data and then we'll update our corridor plan every two years. So those timing planes are gonna change. And they need to because you have different traffic demands every year. But I'm glad you asked that.
Can I speak a little bit to, I mean, part of it is just, we have some old controllers and they aren't as capable as some of the new ones, so. You know, in, in rush hours where you, our, our history would be you give priority to the left turners, even if there's only three of them in there and there's sixty cars parked waiting for them to get done. Newer controllers see that and let the through go first.
Yeah, there's some details of recommendations in here that will help with operations, like the flashing yellow arrows that we're starting to put up on the new signals, those help with operations. To answer your question about how that's physically done, um, there's the computers in the, in the system and there's, depending on the age of those controllers, and if there's communications connecting them, there's different ways to do it. If there's communication like fiber between, then they'll talk constantly and making sure their, their timers are set and they're always in sync. If there's no communication, then you kind of just set it and hope they stay in sync, but a lot of times there's drift on those clocks.
They'll drift over time.
Um, so there's different ways to do it, but yeah, it's, it's clocks, it's, um, computers, it's communications, so.
So all of our. So basically, the computers can, the time is not like setting a Christmas light where it comes on.
No.
See, that's what people think, that it's, it's set and it doesn't change. The computer, if it's, if it's hooked up through the fiber optics, can adjust based upon conditions.
Yes, so there's, there's three different timings that you can have. One is the old dial timer, which is what you're talking about. I don't think we have any more of those in the city. We had one at Reith and Anderson for a while, but I think we've replaced that controller because now we have a leading PED phase there and we couldn't do that with the old controller. We update our controllers. We buy five new controllers every year and then we update them through the system. And of course, with AD signals, you can imagine it takes, you know, ten, twelve years to get through the system and by that time, they have a newer controller out. Our arterials, we always try to get them connected together so that those signals are talking to each other. His example earlier of Fort Riley, you know, releasing a bunch of people at three thirty and Fort Riley could tell our controller, we have so many vehicles coming at this speed and this is the platoon, so that ours would get an advanced notice that coming along, we're going to what's called an extended green time. So with timing plans, you always have minimum green, you have your regular green, and then you have what's a maximum green. And if that, if you get past the minimum green, then you get to the, uh, regular green time. That controller then is starting to look at the side street to see if it's getting a call. If it doesn't have a call, it can go to an extended green, so it'll keep it green longer as long as it's getting a call. If it doesn't get a call, then it'll kick to that side street.
Okay, that's the way I understood it, but I just, that's good to hear.
There's typically three green.
The big complaint that I always got was Reith and Anderson, so I'm glad you changed that.
Yeah.
That's the one everybody hated for some reason.
And just so everybody knows, we never change yellow time and we never change red time. Those are constantly set. So at an intersection, if, if we have a three point seven second yellow, it's always the same time. We never vary yellow and we never vary red. You vary green.
Okay, that's a good, that's a good distinction.
Because you don't wanna vary yellow or green because you want the driver to get used to the light's yellow for so long, I need to stop, I can't make it. You don't wanna vary those times because then that leads to driver confusion.
Okay, excellent explanation. Appreciate that.
That's critical.
Okay, any other comments? Any, any public comments? I see a whole lot of folks here for public comment, but seeing none, we, we won't have public comment. Do, do you need any other feedback from the commission?
No, thank you very much.
Okay, excellent. All right, then we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the city manager briefing.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things to remind you, we've got the April Military Relations Committee Luncheon is Friday, April third at the Hilton Garden Inn. Got the Little Aprilade Spring Social is Thursday, April eleventh, and that's downtown. That's something they, they'd only do a couple of times a year. A lot of times you'll see folks that have been here leaving and new folks coming in, so it's kind of some hail and farewell types of things they do at those socials. And then the City Leaders Academy is April twelfth that the league is putting on at the, at the Hilton. You wanna go to that?
Yeah.
Okay. I know Susan and Peter are signed up already, so, yep, okay. Yeah, we'll send you some new stuff. And then we have the Established Business Leaders Luncheon Learn. That's the seventeenth, eleven thirty to one at the zoo and the mayor's speaking at that along with Jake Wassenberg, who's the chair, board chair of the chamber board. And then we got joint, the Joint City County County Meeting is canceled for April. It conflicts with the little reception we're having here. The Intergovernmental Luncheon then would be April twenty second, so. Just also of note, the, I did do a little recommendation and some background information on the AUSA, AUSA membership. That's in your hard mail folder today, so please take a look at that and just let us know what you think. I don't think there's a huge price difference in that and I think it does show good support when we're part of that. And a lot of those dues go back to our local chapter. I referenced, Rich Jankovic is the chapter chair and if you have questions about, you know, their activities, I'd encourage you to contact him about that. And for some reason, I didn't get a planning chart, so I'm gonna share this with you, Mayor. Coming up on April second, a lot of things on the general agenda, uh, agenda, a lot of them are similar in nature. Obviously, in the middle pack there, you got three requests for the low income housing tax credit program. Cypress Ridge was in the northwest, Hunter Drive along Scenic and then Sunflower Flats downtown. All of those making requests for IRB sales tax and other fee waivers as, as part of that request. We also have two rezonings. They're pretty straightforward, creating the rezoning for the, the Riley County EMS facility that's to be constructed there, uh, near the health department. And then this other one is actually our facility for a pump station that we have there on Tecumseh Road. And the new, uh, the code that we created creates a new industrial area to kind of get rid of the need to do a municipal facilities rezoning. So there's a designated for that is the, what's pushing those rezonings. We've got some discussion with you on the first reading of the amending our parking garage ordinance and then some discussion about, uh, the Aggieville parking during construction that we wanna visit with you about and maybe making some changes there to reflect, uh, some of those concerns and issues we've had in the past that we can hopefully maybe avoid through this next construction season. And as, you know, construction's gonna continue a while in, in Aggieville for sure. And then with the downtown garage, uh, first reading of an ordinance there to establish the fees and also some license plate recognition equipment, so an agreement for that, that'll be part of that. And then that second reading, we would bring back a, a permanent fee resolution. I think we'll have a draft one for you to look at this time, or at least some, some ranges of fees for, for some of that. And on the consent, we've got a few change orders for you to consider. The, there's a Buffalo Brick Purchase, so that's a brand and that's a, that's a paver for street paver brick. We've got the grant to do the restoration of Juliet from Points to Pierre. So the first block by the library is brick and, and a lot of that can be salvaged. But in the second block, there, there isn't any brick, so this is pre-ordering the quantity of brick we need for that project and we would just provide that to the, to the contractor that wins the award. So that's, that's what that's on there for, for permission. It's about seventy-five grand, I think. Got some replats, all of these, all, all but the Purple Heart, the Purple Heart Edition is out by American Legion. We're replating some of their track there that also includes the credit union. We've got, all of those Willis editions are the same area out in the northwest part of town. They're just different, these versions of segmented areas of, of that particular plat. Many of them, several of them have some restricted covenants as well. And then looking for authorization to submit a grant application for some maintenance work. This would be an eighty, twenty grand on Fort Riley Boulevard, focusing on that asphalt section from Westwood down to Pulisca. So that was a, you know, the, when they built the bridge, a lot of new asphalt got built from the bridges to the west, to Richards and all of that, cause that intersection got redone, but that old section of pavement's in pretty bad shape. So we're hoping to get a grant that'll repave that. And there's a special event application, I think that's down in Blue Earth for that seventh annual Bayou Gator Crawl.
Is it a crawl or a craw?
Craw. I think it's a craw-crawl. They had requested a permit for a four hour parade on Points. We talked them out of that. Let's see. Then on the sixteenth, we've got, uh, rezoning on, so these are, these are some city-initiated rezonings of several different residential areas that were originally zoned to be multifamily, but everything has been constructed to single family. So we have initiated some rezoning to just change it to single family of what it is. Cause you can imagine if three people decide to sell to a developer and they came in with multifamily, just because of the current zoning, could create some issues. So, uh, I know the community development department has been working with those areas and, uh, there seemed to be pretty good agreement from folks to protect their investment in there and to do those, I, what I would call friendly rezoning. We've got, also for your consideration, uh, anticipate the consultant having the profile back for you to review and approve that evening. And then also we got a TEP note sale, a GO bond sale and resolutions for those. And then Manhattan Marine Company has a special event request. We've also waiting on an agreement with Farmers Market for the mall parking lot. Look at awarding some first phase of Hudson Avenue reconstruction. It's, uh, some pretty bad sections there. We're gonna, not gonna be able to do it all in one year, but it's an area we wanna, uh, start with that. And then, yeah, I think that's, uh, pretty much all of that. Looking at work sessions coming up on the ninth, we'll have an update from Public Works on Streets and then also some discussion on stormwater and floodplain management and our first quarter report this year from the CVB and Visit Manhattan. And then on the twenty-third, the Move MHK folks will be in to update you on where they're at with the Comprehensive Parks Master Plan. And as of right now, we don't have a, a meeting planned for that fifth Tuesday and I'm sure we'll find some things to, to fill in along the way as things, uh, things move forward, so. Yeah, that's all I've got.
Okay. I, I've just got two, two quick things. One, you know, I, I shared with, with Ron and Jason that information on Fake Patty's Day that, that I mentioned at the thing and so that's in your folder there, so that we can use that, you know, as ammunition when people say, hey, it's the same as football games, so I think that's good. And then the other thing is, I've had a couple of discussions over the past week, you know, with the developers on, on the workforce housing, and so that's been shared with you, what, what Zach sent. But to boil it down into something simple, it, it appears to me that we still haven't actually voted, I think we discussed on what workforce housing was, but the definition, so that when we're designing the policy, that, that there's clear guidance. And we may need to put this on the agenda to just say, okay, let's have a formal vote to define what is workforce housing using that, that bar that Stephanie had in the chart, so there's no confusion. And then the second thing, again, not getting into details of his proposal, but we have this workforce housing money. And, and I think we should vote, or consider anyway, putting in the policy that a developer can come in and say, I would like X amount of this money, sort of like we do for economic development. And say, okay, I, I want a portion of this money because then that will lower the price of the house down to the workforce definition and I can sell it. And then the commission would have to look at each one individually because I would not be in favor of somebody coming in and walking away with a couple of million dollars. But if it's a few hundred thousand like, like Zach's example, I, I think it may make sense. So I think, I would like to see us add that and just nail that. I know slowly but surely, you know, the staff would like to have one comprehensive policy, but I, but I'm, I'm the opinion, if we wanna keep this ball rolling, that we need to just incrementally add stuff till we get it done. And, 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 and so if you wanna review his thing, we could maybe put that on the agenda in the future here and, and see if we could resolve that. And I, and I don't know what other guidance, you know, Stephanie needs up there. She's, I think, working on it, but, but, but I get, I just get the sense that we just haven't nailed this down properly yet.
Yeah, we're looking for that kind of input and feedback, Mayor. Appreciate that. I think there's some, you know, multiple different options we're looking at, whether it's infill, rental, single family, price points, geographic locations, all those things. And, and we've talked internally and I really think CD needs to come forward and Stephanie and I talked about this with a recommendation. I mean, they've heard a lot of feedback from you all, but that definition of workforce housing and what's eligible and what's not will be included in each of those segmented policies. Allowing us to do it comprehensively also gives you a perspective of what it's gonna take to administer these things. These incentives are gonna be more like economic development packages than they are anything else. Our TIF and TDD exploration over the last twenty years is about us doing public projects and using revenue from those districts to pay for those projects for the most part. Housing incentives are not going to be that way. They're going to be agreements and arrangements and relationships with developers, which is more like an economic development agreement that we have to administer over a ten-year period based on performance, which in the last twelve, thirteen years, we've done three. So current staffing is going to be a question as to how we're going to do this. Current, and, and financially, are we using the eight million to pay for this for the next ten years? What if we have programs well beyond that ten years? I'm more worried about the administration and the cost to implement and the oversight that's gonna take from a legal, financial, clerk's office, CD and our office to administer. So I'd really like that approach to be agreed upon before we get down the path of, of just awarding things to developers because I don't think we understand, we don't have anything really to point to very comprehensively that is gonna be this labor intensive for staff. Our benefit districts today require massive involvement from public works, legal and finance. And those are things we've been doing for thirty years. And we've got a whole new element of housing incentive we'd like to roll out there and they're gonna be labor intensive and they're gonna take every year. And you're gonna want reports on these things, just like we do economic development. Who have you incentivized? What did you incentivize? People in the community are gonna be able, want to be able to point to what it is those tax dollars went to support, what they leveraged and how are they doing over time? No different than economic development. So I just comprehensively throw that.
So I'd just comprehensively throw that out there to consider, because that's the guidance and feedback we'll ultimately be looking for in a policy, so we know how to budget and staff and appropriately resource these programs.
Well, I don't want to see a lot of that money go into, you know, administrative overhead, because that's not what the voters voted on. And, and I also just think we're, we're still just moving too slow is the point, and, and that's the feedback I'm getting from some of these developers. I don't know if they've talked to any of you, but you may be hearing the same thing, and it, it's like, so, so I'd just like to have us do something. It seems like we're going to do nothing for this whole year, and then we need to do something quicker, if, if possible.
I would want to be cautious of doing something just for the sake of doing something. I want to make sure that it's effective and trackable and can be held accountable, so. You know, we really, we do need to find a balance between those things, because we don't want to create an entirely new full-time position just to administer these things. But I'm, I'm with you. We got this money. It is kind of burning a hole in people's, in our pockets, but we really need to be careful with it.
Well, yeah, we don't want to, we don't want to do something that's ignorant, you know, in the long run, but, but, but still, I think we can come up with something simplistic, and, uh, I think some of the suggestions the developers have provided us seem to make sense. So I just think we need to pick those apart.
Am I remembering correctly that at some point, um, Josh Brewer mentioned that brought up the possibility of Habitat? Overseeing some of this.
Well, he, he was talking about that land trust.
Beyond that, to, to provide, because I know, isn't he in discussions with you about taking over the rehab program? Or administering the rehab program?
He may be in discussions with Stephanie, but he has not been in to talk to me about that or our office about that. I know he mentioned at the podium what the mayor mentioned, which was an overview of land trust and how Habitat could assist the city with that.
If we, we can leverage that, you know, that's fine. That's what we should consider, but, you know, from that, uh, from that standpoint. And then the, then the third thing I was going to mention, you know, we, we've, we've talked off and on about sales tax, and I don't know if the car dealers have contacted any of you. I've got about an hour's worth of, uh, you know, of stuff from them today, and of course, they're completely against the idea of us doing anything with the sales tax. And, and, and the main reason is just the way the, uh, well, you know, I hadn't really thought about it, but you know, if you, if you go buy a forty thousand dollar car and you get hit with a ten cent sales tax, you know, there's a bundle there, and then Wichita, you know, that's seven and a half down there, and so they're basically saying that, while, while if you live in Riley County, it's sort of irrelevant, because when you register the car, you, you're going to pay the sales tax. But nobody from Wichita is going to come up here and buy a car, because there's no rebate system. You know, you, you'd pay our nine and a half, ten percent, and then when you register in Wichita, you, you don't get the difference between the seven and a half. And I guess that's a state issue. I don't know if legally there's any way that you can exempt car sales from sales tax and say, you know, people need to just pay that tax at the, at their county of residence?
You do get an income tax deduction from it.
Yeah, but that's, uh, you know, because there's going to be some huge pushback from, from that group, and it has, it has significant impact on, 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 I think, uh, I think their sales overall, so I just wanted to, to share that. Some of the rest of you may get calls from them.
No, I've already talked to some of them, and I'll be talking to them some more.
Okay, and that, I just wanted to share that, so you're all aware of it. So anybody else have anything?
I was just going to piggyback a little bit on the incentives. So one of the things you're going to hear next week with the low income housing tax credit applications, you know, some of them have wanted, so the state, in order to get these tax credits, they have this point system that if you, if you can get, if you can leverage different entities for your project, you'll get more points, which makes you a lot more likely to get the credits. So one of the suggestions, uh, within that process would be that we use some of those sales tax dollars for housing to reimburse us for, because one of the things they ask for are water and sewer, waiving water and sewer hookup fees, which in our enterprise funds and structurally, we can't do. We, when we've done it in the past, we've used other funds to pay the utility. So that's the concept. So I, I just want you to think about that, and just don't be surprised when you see that.
Okay, so they're thinking of using some of that sales tax money for, for, for that, which I wouldn't mind, except we've kind of said we want to use that for workforce housing, and these are going to be more low income housing, which falls out of the, the, the definition. I mean, like I said, I wouldn't necessarily mind it, except for that point.
So anyway, I just wanted to give you a heads up.
Yeah, that's good. That does a conflict with the concept of defining workforce and only using the money on that. And if that's low income, then that's sort of not going to work.
Aren't low income people working?
That's, that's, but, but the point is, you know, the.
Well, again, it's our decision, whichever. I mean, I'll throw out, I don't know if anyone else is interested in this, but the, uh, there was that recent Supreme Court ruling on the real estate commissions and stuff. It hasn't gotten a lot of publicity, but it was like a billion dollar payout, and starting in July, they're going to change their, there's going to be some rule changes, because right now you know it's six percent, uh, when you sell a house, and then the selling gets it, and it's, you know, it depends on what you read or who you talk to. You know, is that going to be a big revolutionary thing or not? Now, just wondering if we could, you know, get someone from one of the real estate groups or something, maybe for a, just for a briefing or something like that, to see what impact they might think that has, since housing is such a big thing with us.
A big thing in the Kansas City Star about that, and it is definitely going to have impact, and I found it rather confusing.
No, that's why I brought it up. It isn't that, because it's always like, well, can someone still make an arrangement if they want to, so? But yet some think it's going to be a big revolutionary.
Well, and, and it's, you know, the, it's also a question of who pays the six percent, whether it's the seller or the buyer, or whether you agree on it, you know, yeah.
I've received, in my personal capacity, I've received an email from a realtor that I've worked with, presenting his point of view about it. I'd be happy to share that with you all, if you're interested.
Yeah, I'm interested. I just, again, I'd just throw it out to the group if we'd like to ask staff to see if they can get us something from the association to do a presentation. And again, I know I just have a kind of a real curiosity, curiosity about it, what's going to happen, because like Karen said, I found, depending on what you read, oh, it's going to be a big thing or not, and then it gets a little.
Okay, if we don't have anything else, we can take a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, could you please draw the roll?
Commissioner McCullough.
Yes.
Commissioner Opelt.
Yes.
Commissioner Ramona.
Yes.
Mayor Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner Adamcheck.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Here, the city commission meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you.